Let's go ahead and get ready. Thank you very much for joining us today in our city council work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Eden?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Taya?
Here.
Steven?
Here.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is Johnny Creek Firewise Committee presentation. Representatives from the Johnny Creek Firewise Committee will be present to provide information to the council regarding agency and homeowner collaboration efforts to reduce fire hazards in the Johnny Creek area. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Larry Gephardt. I live at 1200 Aspen Drive in Pocatello. That's up in the Johnny Creek area. I sent some graphics. I don't know if you've received those or not, but I'll talk to, very briefly, the story here. After the, well, maybe 20 years ago, the Firewise organization was working with individual homeowners to do fuel reduction in the juniper cedar populated areas. And over the years, the hotter and drier weather has made that Johnny Creek area and other of our urban wildland areas around Pocatello more dangerous. After the Charlotte Fire in 2012, you know, that took out 66 homes, $8 million in property damage, $1.5 million cost to the city and Bannock County, and the fire prevention efforts saved an estimated $472 million in property saved. So, fire protection, fire prevention is valuable. We started to expand the awareness of the fire hazards by inviting Johnny Creek residents to gatherings at Fire Station 5 at the Country Club, and a few people would come. But on the 28th of June this year, we sent out a broader invitation, and 60 or more people attended the presentation at the fire station. So, our fire department people, Bureau of Land Management, Forest Service, and our Firewise Committee people were all there, telling some of the fire hazard stories. And the current project activities that we tried to focus on was the hazards of the ravines. And the graphics that I sent is a satellite photo of that Johnny Creek area and two of the ravine sites that we hope to do significant fuel reduction. And we know from Firewise studies around the country, and that was on public radio this morning, I don't know if some of you may have heard, the story of wildfires in Georgia. And their programs there are similar to what we're doing here, is to try to organize. So, the project area, the Johnny Creek and the other urban wildland, the terrain areas are at high risk. The fuels there are mostly juniper cedar, have a lot of high oil content, so they burn hot and fast. The weather is hotter and drier. We're experiencing that now in Pocatello. And the terrain, the hills and ravines set up conditions of hot airflow, so fires can spread quickly. The terrain contributes to risk. The hills and ravines are there. It's hard to clear. I turned 79 in June, so I don't have the physical strength to personally do a lot of that ravine work anymore, so I'm counting on support. The hot summer dries the fuels, and the climate trends that we see are going to make that whole situation worse. Chief Gates commented that a major Johnny Creek fire would be his greatest nightmare in lives lost and property loss and so on. And we just don't have the equipment, aerial equipment or ground equipment, to deal with that. So, the focus for prevention is a focus on fuels, surface fuels, ladder fuels, and ground fuels. A lot of the Charlotte Fire home damages, you know, were firebrands that came from burning trees blown by the hot winds generated by the fire itself, or by the weather that would land on a shake roof, or actually blow up under the eaves of a house, or get into a deck and transfer the fire that way. The high hazard area are the ravines, the home ignition zones 100 or 200 feet from the homes. So, the Firewise program is to remove all the accumulated woody debris and smaller conifers that grow there, and reduce the density of trees. And there's some guidelines, how many trees per acre that homeowners should have, and so on. The fuels work that we need to work on this year and probably over the next couple of years, if we can concentrate, are in these ravine areas. On the eighth slide, I took a picture just down the hill from my back deck, and it's down towards, you can see Indian Hills School and Fire Station Number 5, and the large concentration of juniper cedars in the ravines. So, the fuels reduction work is living up and trimming and grass removal, removal of whole trees, and then building slash piles that can be picked up and moved out of there. And that's heavy physical work in there. I mean, there's not, there are, there is machinery available in the world to do this type of stuff, but I don't think we have any of it here. So, we partner the goal that we've been talking about, and Hannah Sanger has been working with Department of Lands, Bureau of Land Management, to arrange, to try to rebuild this matching grant funding, so we can provide some cost share. The Forest Service and Idaho Department of Lands has agreed to some investment. The RC&amp;D, the Resource Conservation and Development Organization, has some leadership and experience. We're at the meeting that we had week before last. We really invited more and more families to sign up to be on the ravine project, or to sign up for cost shares, to get their fuel reduction on their property. An initiative that we began a couple of years ago was to invite insurance companies to participate. The idea there is if insurance companies can help invest in fire prevention, it would reduce their losses. And we use the Charlotte Fire as sort of an example of that. And local insurance executives that we've met with think that's a great idea, and we've tried to move that up the corporate food chain, and met with some resistance, because, you know, no insurance companies that we could find are actually enlaging with the public in this urban wildland. It's just a cost factor, and they'll just raise the premiums. And that's, you know, we worry about property taxes in Pocatello and in Idaho, but if property taxes can be held down, insurance costs, for those of us in those high fire zones, can go up. My personal house hazard insurance went up $400 from last year to this year, in part because the insurance company is recognizing that this is a hazardous area, so their cost outlay could be higher. So, the last two graphics in the center, my little bullet list of what we plan, and then sort of my ask of you all. The Johnny Creek fire plan is to create individual defensible homes using Firewise principles and guidance from the fire department. The ravine and perimeter fire breaks and fuel reduction, widen access routes on some roads. There's some roads up in that area that are just single lane, so a fire truck coming in and homeowners trying to get out would run into each other on the road. So, there's a need, I guess, for intervention and conversation on how to solve that. Early notification and evacuation plan, that was heavily emphasized at the homeowners' meeting, to have a plan, and guidance is out there. The warning signs, if you drive on those roads up in these urban wildland areas, there are old signs that have been there for many years that say fireworks prohibited and so on. Some of those signs are faded out, they're hard to read, and they certainly don't have modern media marketing symbology and impact that a better sign would have. We're encouraging every family to have an evacuation plan and a network of contacts. So, for example, if kids are at home and parents are at work, you know, who's going to follow up in there if there needs to be evacuation? My last graphic was just a checklist of other help that is needed for the Johnny Creek project, as well as other urban wildland fuel reductions. One is the fireworks near the hazard ravines. The city and the county have done a good job of banning fireworks in high hazard areas, but right across the street from those, it's anything is a go. So, I could sit up on my deck on the 4th of July and see aerial fireworks launched from, in my little map, it's the white area. It's okay to do this, but with a little bit of an angle on the launch, those could just, you know, fly across the street, get into the dry grass or the juniper cedars, just come right up the hill into that housing area above. So, upgrading the fireworks warning signs is a need. There's a cost to that. Our committee would like to help out with that. If we can agree on a sign design and get some procured, what we would do there is probably ask some of our larger vendors, like Home Depot and Lowe's and so on, for small grants, $2,000 to $5,000, to buy the signage and new posts and that kind of thing. We would like to have more emphasis on reader boards. The city has done that before. I mean, there's a limited supply of those lighted automated reader boards, but in the last couple of years, they've been put down along Bannock Highway, just as a reminder. The current signage before the 4th of July, "Cover your loads," so things going to the landfill aren't blowing out on the street. But the text on those reader boards can emphasize the fireworks hazards around the holiday times. We need more community education. We'll write press releases for the newspaper and TV. The mayor's newsletter is a tremendous way to communicate, so periodic reminders of the Firewise needs and opportunities would be a good thing to include in there. I presume that our fire department is building, or already has, a good wish list of things that we could use if we get more infrastructure money coming into Idaho and into Pocatello. An example of a need there is to upgrade the reverse 911 system, so that it is more selective in nature, and that it's functional, and then get that organized, so that the number of respondents, customers as it were, are fully registered in the system, so they would receive warnings of fire hazard and then evacuation notice. And then my last bullet is, come up with some new methodology or strategies to engage the homeowner insurance companies, because we perceive that's an opportunity. Certainly with our car insurance, you know, insurance companies have invested money in our homes, discounts on our insurance to have smoke detectors and so on. So, using that same philosophy, we should be able to get some help there. So, subject to questions or discussion, that's what I wanted to-
You mentioned fireworks across the street. You can watch them go up and stuff like that. I want to remind everybody, those are illegal to fire, to light off anywhere in the city.
Right.
So, it doesn't matter if you're across the street from where you are, or if you're in the middle of City Hall's parking lot, they're illegal.
Yeah, the difficulty is, you know, if you see that, you know, a couple of houses down, you don't really know where it's coming from.
Well, and you don't, and then our police department, I've talked to them a lot about that, and they've said, you know, we come around a corner, and there's 25 people sitting there, and you see a firework go off, but who do you cite?
Right. Yeah, so that's-
Because they don't know.
Yeah. And that's a-
You know, we can solve that, right?
Yeah.
By not letting them, only allowing events to happen, as opposed to letting fireworks stands set up on every corner and sell fireworks to the General Joe Blot.
The way to solve the illegal fireworks is stop Fort Hall from selling them, and that isn't going to happen, so that's where they come, that's where they get them.
And that's a sort of an economic political decision down the road, is the danger, is the risk high enough that all fireworks should be banned for a while? And other communities are doing that.
Yes.
It takes a little political courage for you all to do that, but it's something to consider.
Yeah. Chris?
Yeah, we're not making a decision, so I probably don't do this, but just to be very clear, I've been the chair of the Johnny Creek Firewise Committee for, I don't know, 11 years or something, and was instrumental in pulling that meeting together. In the interest of helping the public know what's going on, we are having a follow-up planning meeting next week that will include representatives from the agencies that Larry mentioned, as well as the fire department. A lot of the agency people, unfortunately, have been called out to fires in other states, but they remain very interested. We're really thinking about protecting Johnny Creek from two aspects. One is fires that start in Johnny Creek and spread, and the other is fires that start outside. So, for example, the fire on Gibson Jack at the end of last summer, had the wind been different, it could easily have moved transversely, come down a ravine, and then carried throughout Johnny Creek. So, Glenn Blackwell, who was former fire chief, has brought some historical knowledge forward, and so we're going to be working with BLM. But I, yeah, I want to be transparent, number one, but there are going to be some difficult conversations that I think homeowners are now willing to have, like widening roads, because their choice has now been clearly delineated as no fire truck is going to go down there because it endangers the equipment and the personnel, or you might have to allow the city to do some tree cutting on its right-of-way. So, we'll be working with homeowners as part of our local effort to create those conversations.
Other comments?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just say that we, the Charlotte Fire's not the only fire we've had. I think we have one up in the Sacred Hills that was started by fireworks, and-
Yeah. The estimate is over 90% of fires like that are human caused. They're exploding targets, fireworks, campfires, you know, and so on. So, it is, the people side is really important.
And I think this is a proactive thing for Johnny Creek to be doing it, because it's not the only place in Pocatello that needs to be proactive.
Right. Yeah, Hannah has a lot more information on what, her work with Department of Lands to get, you know, funding for fuel reduction, so it doesn't cost us taxpayers directly in Pocatello as much. But we just need to pull in the harness altogether on this to make our community safer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. We'll move to agenda item number three, fiscal year 2021 Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grant Application. Planning and Development Services staff is seeking approval of the submission of a grant application for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Fiscal year 2021 Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grant. Ratification and acceptance of the grant will be scheduled on a future regular council meeting in order to meet the application deadline of July 12, 2021. If awarded, this grant will provide funding to continue the city's lead hazard control program over 3.5 years, and total grant application is approximately $3.2 million. The grant has a 10% match requirement and is requested to be provided by CDBG grant funds. No general funds will be included in the match request. Grant rewards are anticipated to be announced September 2021.
I have one question to start with. How do we meet the deadline of July 12? This is the eighth.
This is the meeting to do that.
We're going to vote on it.
We're going to get direction, and we'll ratify the application if council is okay with this.
And we have done that before, council, in order to-
It's not really the way to do business, is it?
Well, your motion today can be to approve the application, and then ratify it and accept it after it's awarded. It's rare, but we have done this before in order to meet application deadline.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Christine Howe, CDBG Program Coordinator. As the mayor just articulated in the agenda item, I'm here before you today regarding our Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grant Application. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development released the Notice of Funding Opportunity for this grant program, and the purpose is to continue the lead hazard control work that's currently being conducted out of our Neighborhood and Community Services Division. That grant period of performance expires, actually expired on July 2nd, and we're in a closeout period. So, if this grant application's successful, it allows to continue that program. The application is for approximately $2.1 million in federal grant funds, with an additional request for $577,500 in what's called the Healthy Home Supplemental Funding. The lead program requires a 10% match, which would be provided through the Community Development Block Grant Program. That is an allowable matching grant, and that would be approximately $277,000, excuse me, let me get the exact number, so I don't misquote it, $227,446. And the grant would be from approximately August or September of 2021 upon award through till March of 2025. Through the program, we would attempt to remediate lead hazards in approximately 100 homes over the 42-month period of performance. We would operate the program out of the existing department and utilizing our existing staff within the lead hazard program and our CDBG staff. The application is due July 12th, so I'm here before you today to request approval of the application submission. And as noted, the award notice wouldn't be until the end of August or September of 2021, and so the council would not have to accept or approve the award until that time. However, as council advised, that can be accomplished at your next meeting, so we can sign all the forms upon award without having to come back to you in August or September.
Heidi?
Yeah, I have several questions and comments, so should I just ask the first one and then come back to you?
Sure.
Okay. Did we use all of the funding that we received previously for lead-based paint grants when the city has received that in the past, or were we unable to utilize all of that?
We've used about 90% of the funding so far. We were awarded just about $1.5 million in federal grant funds with an additional $150,000 match. We've, to date, and I'm still reconciling the final number through June 30th, but we've used about $1.35 million of the $1.5 million, and we have a few projects we're completing through the closeout period. So, we are on track to spend out the entirety of that grant award.
Okay, and we expect that we'll continue to get more people signing up for it and be able to utilize funds if we get more?
Yes, we're actually anticipating an increase in the number of homes we'll be able to complete, and part of that is due to not needing a ramp-up period. So, with the initial grant award, we had to put the program in place, which took about three to six months. We already have everything kind of smoothly going, and we've also accomplished a lot of outreach over the previous three years, so we have a queue of projects that have already received risk assessments that are ready to start, as well as contractors who are prepared to do the lead hazard control work. So, we anticipate about 28 homes per year under this new grant award. In 2020, we accomplished about 18 homes. So, we anticipate an increase in the number of homes we'll do, just based on not needing the ramp-up, having the queue of homes ready to go, and contractors prepared.
Okay. No, I just had a couple of other comments that I just wanted to share with the council. So, I think you have been doing a great job with your CDBG administration and also overseeing this, and I know that when we signed up for this, it was before your time, but one of the things that I was a little bit curious about is, I remembered when the council first approved this, it seemed to run in my mind, and maybe somebody can correct me if you remember differently, that it was all supposed to be funded out of the lead, but now it looks like we're having to use CDBG staff as like our match portion. So, that is a little bit different from what I remembered when we signed up, and maybe it's still okay, but that was, what I remember when we agreed to do it, was that it was all supposed to be covered by the lead portion, and so now we are having to subsidize it a little bit. So, just bringing that up as something to think about. Another thing, I don't really know how much of an issue or concern this is, but I just wanted to share, so you knew kind of what I have heard. Ever since the program started, I've actually heard many times, over the course of the last couple of years, anecdotal stories about people who felt like, while the, I guess it's federal people that would come in to inspect and make sure that everything was in compliance, that it was almost like people felt like it was a little bit like witch hunt, like they would go around town and try to find people that were doing work on their house, and find them, and they would go to real estate offices and say, "Tell me all the properties that sold recently," and then they'd go inspect them and try to find those people like if they had replaced their own windows or something like that. So, that's just a little bit concerning to me. I don't think it's like, I don't know if you've heard any of those reports, or if anybody else has, but I've actually heard it, like, not just one time, but I've kind of heard it a lot. So, I just, I'm not saying we couldn't do it, but I just have a little bit of concern when it starts getting to where a well-intended thing starts making it difficult for people who want to just paint their house or do maintenance on their house, and they're feeling like somebody's coming in and trying to, you know, catch them.
Linda?
I was just going to comment on that first. I hadn't heard that before. The biggest problem that I have heard in the community from people is people that really wanted to get their houses done and didn't qualify, so they were upset about that. And trying to explain to them, you know, that that wasn't us setting those requirements. They would be angry at the city, thinking that we were the ones, you know, not allowing them to participate in the program. So, you know, once I explained that this is, you know, those standards or requirements are set by the federal government, and that that's the terms of the grant, then they were fine with that. But the other question that I had was about the contractors. I know in the beginning of the program, there was a lot of, maybe a learning curve, you could call it, with sort of educating contractors on the proper way to do things with this program. And I know that, I had talked to some people that participated in the program that had trouble with the contractors they worked with, so I was wondering, is that all going well now and smoothed out, and how are we doing with the contractors that participate in this?
Thank you for the question. It's definitely an issue that is kind of, each state that has this program faces in terms of getting qualified, enough qualified contractors to do the jobs. What we've built into this new application is additional training, annual training for the contractors, because they have to meet certain EPA requirements, as, I think the acronym is RRP, for the specific type of supervisor certification that they have to have to oversee the work. So, we've built in additional training, because we found that from the first round, they only conducted one training for supervisors and the contractor staff, which wasn't sufficient to last over the three-year period. We've also, as I mentioned, we've reached out to new contractors toward the end of this grant that have been certified using kind of the EPA's database to line them up for the remediation work as programs come, as the new program starts, so houses can come online and we can subcontract. In addition, we've kind of beefed up our policies and procedures, so we have to comply with Section 3, which encourages hiring of local contractors that meet some of our low-to-moderate income requirements. So, we have our Section 3 policy, and we're conducting a pre-qualification procurement for the general contractors, so we'll have a certified pool that we can then pull from when we do the bids for the individual homes. I think there were probably issues with contractors in the past. We've been reviewing our contract and agreement that we have between the city, the property owner, and the contractor with the legal department, to ensure that things like warranties and indemnification and hold harmless provisions- and hold harmless provisions actually are sufficient for the work. And we've adopted an internal check and balance policy so that when we're prepared to make payments, we ensure that the final inspection and clearance is completed, and we have the department head approve, the division manager approve before any, you know, payments are issued or authorized. And so hopefully, some of these additional policies and procedures will prevent any issues with contractors. I can't guarantee it, obviously. But a little more oversight and a little more standardization of our processes, I think, will help resolve some of those issues. And we've already got that in the works, both for the CDBG program, the current lead program, and moving forward if this grant is awarded. And I do just want to touch on council president's questions about compliance. As, this program is very specific. It's for our low-to-moderate income residents, so they do have to meet an income eligibility. And the program preferences those with children under six. And it's primarily for remediation of paint hazards. So we don't get involved if properties are for sale or anything that might, that the EPA might be cracking down on in terms of compliance. We have to make sure that...
The thing they said was, "Oh, while we were in town already, because the city has this listing, now we're taking the opportunity while we're here to go around and drive around and try to catch people." And so that just felt a little bit, uh, to me.
Yeah. So we can work on establishing a relationship with EPA folks who are in town to kind of explain what the city's doing. Because we have been doing lead-based paint work through CDBG for the 25 years we've done that grant. And so we can work on that so that it isn't a witch hunt.
It was just more concerns that I've heard from people saying, you know, we feel like we were happy, and then now this came, and these guys are here in town trying to crack down on everything and targeting people, which is, you know, I just was a little uncomfortable to hear that, so.
Thank you for bringing that up. We'll make note of that. And then the match portion, there was a 10% match required on the initial grant application from 2017, which was voted to come out of CDBG and general funds. And then this also has a required match. So this year, we decided to just take it out of our regular CDBG entitlement fund appropriation that we get every year. That way, there was no reliance on general funds. And since we already do lead-based paint work out of CDBG, it was kind of a natural fit anyways. So it would be its own individual project each year, and then the city wouldn't have to appropriate additional general funds. It would just be our entitlement grant funds to hopefully offset some cost burden on the budget.
Okay, so I got Rick, and then Roger, and then it looks like Chris.
What's the average expenditure per home?
It's about $15,000.
$15,000?
And that includes all of the sort of control work that the contractor completes, an initial risk assessment, housing the tenants temporarily when they're out of the house while the work's being done, and the final clearance.
Is the painting inside or outside, or both?
It can be both.
Roger?
I have two comments. One, I really applaud doing this work because we have the oldest housing stock in Idaho. That's what CDBG reported several years ago. So we probably have the greatest problem per capita with lead, and to remediate this is an important thing. Second thing is, yes, I see where we're spending money, but we're getting money to turn over in our town at the same time. You know, if we're spending a salary in the city and we're using CDBG funds, but we're taking that 90% more in terms of what the federal government comes in to help people, and that turns into jobs, I'm all for that, so I appreciate it.
Chris?
Yeah, I know that you're relatively new to this position, and as is our city planner, and I know that you've been working together on, you know, some cleaning up timelines and processes and all that sort of thing. And I appreciate that. And I, my guess is that these late approvals will minimize as the two of you continue to work through the processes that we have in place. And so, good job, keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick?
I would move for approval of Agenda Item Number Three, the submission of a grant for the Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Lyric. Connie, can you call the rule?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
So I just want to be clear, that was to apply for the grant, and then after, if the grant is awarded, we will have it back in front of the council to be, for the signing and everything. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Four, Childcare Code Modifications, Police Department. Police Department staff will present proposed revisions to Municipal Code 5.28.120 staffing and definitions to align with Idaho State Code 16.06.02.011.
Good morning, Mayor Blatt and members of the city council. My name is Tori Eldridge, and I am the licensing officer with the City of Pocatello Police Department. And I am requesting to change the daycare license 5.28.120 so that our city code is in compliance with state code. Our code right now reads that staff members on premise, that each childcare provider must ensure the one licensed staff member who is at least 18 years of age remain on the premise at all times. City code reads that if they're 17 years and younger, that they have to be immediately supervised by an employee that's 18 years of age or older. So I'm requesting to change the code to where it defines what supervision is, as being within sight and sound, and that any employee that's 17 years age or younger must be directly supervised by an 18-year-old employee, 18-year-olds, years older, older.
And licensed?
Yes, they all have to be licensed. But if they're 17, they can't be left alone with the children. They have to be supervised by, and that's state code too. And we can't be, the city codes can't be any less lenient than state code.
Chris?
I don't have a problem with any of that, but I'm wondering whether or not you've given any thought to the regulations around the whole drug-free situation? Because it appears to me that it may be, there may be a more lenient drug policy in place if you want to be a police officer than there is if you want to be a daycare worker.
Okay.
And I believe police officers have to have been, can't have used drugs for, I think it's three years, if I remember incorrectly, whereas I think daycare might be 10 years. And I also think that perhaps when that code was written, it was prior to the age of medically assisted drug addiction intervention. And I think that there is definitely, I mean, that is now an accepted part of how addiction can be dealt with. Not everyone engages in it, but it is accepted in the industry. And I wonder whether or not our code perhaps needs to have a little more distinction drawn when a person is under the supervision of medical personnel, is, you know, utilizing medical intervention to fight their addiction. That seems to be, or to ensure frankly, the fact that they're clean. And they have a, you know, medical and/or psychiatric professional who can attest to the fact that they're being regularly treated. That seems to me to be a somewhat different situation than simply, yeah, I promise that I'm drug-free. I mean, you know, if they can prove that they're drug-free because they're being tested, I think that's quite, quite different than simply, you know, making a statement. So I wonder whether, and that's come up a few times. And I'm wondering whether or not you've given that any thought? And I certainly would like our codes to give that some thought because I think it's appropriate in 2021.
Okay.
I would too. I've actually requested that to be on the agenda at some point. But it hasn't been, but I, that's a big, that's an issue. So I'd be very interested in what your thoughts are on that.
On, as far as denials go, and for daycare license, I know it's within the last 10 years, but they, when they're denied, they have the opportunity to come in front of city council and explain their situation and the circumstances around what their life is like and how they're rebuilding their life now. And so as far as I know, that's...
But what I'm saying is, is that 10 years is draconian. Is what I'm, is what I'm saying. Because, because, you know, if you can, if you can be drug-free for two years and get a gun and a badge, you should be able to be drug-free for three years and work in a daycare in the, you know. I, it's, I think the 10-year thing is draconian. So I, that's what I, why I wanted it on the agenda, because I think that that needs to be changed. A lot of times, those particular people, individuals, are single moms that, and they're low-income, and they're struggling to get their lives back together. And the only way they can work is if their children can go with them to daycare. And to deny somebody a daycare license because they've only been sober for five, or clean for five years as opposed to 10 years, is absurd to me. And it's damaging. It's very damaging. So I'd like to see that addressed at some point.
So how do we, since it hasn't been able to get on an agenda, how do we, how do we proceed with getting that to where it can be considered? Where, I don't know, who would do the, you know, probably a little bit of research would be required, perhaps some conversations with professionals in the community, you know, who actually have the expertise to address this question versus laypeople like ourselves on the council?
Yeah.
How do we move forward, Mr. Mayor, I guess?
So the question is, is the Child Care Advisory Committee had any discussion in regards to that?
We have not, not since. And I, I've only been in this position since October, so since...
That has been asked a time or two. Who's the liaison to the childcare? So in the meetings with the childcare, have you brought that up? Have you asked to have that put on any agenda, to have that discussion with the childcare so they have a recommendation when they come in front of the council?
No, I have not. If that's what you're asking me to do, I'm more than happy to do that. But I think we don't have a meeting until September.
Yeah.
I think, I think the key is, is we've got to have the discussion at the Child Care Advisory Committee so that they will have an idea of what suggestions that they would make to the city council to make those changes and then, and then that would start the ball rolling to move it forward.
And I'm also, again, going to say that I think with all due respect to the childcare providers, I mean, I'm a retired educator, but that doesn't make me a medical expert when it comes to drug intervention. And so as an educator, and, you know, I have certain opinions and certain experiences. But do I have your permission, Mr. Mayor, as liaison to suggest that we might want to hear, that the Child Care Advisory Committee might want to hear from, you know, a medical expert or two? As, you know, as they're having this discussion? Do I have your permission to suggest that?
I think that, I think that as you contact or as you ask the chair of the Child Care Committee to put that on the agenda for a meeting, that that would be, you could definitely ask for that, to have somebody come in and discuss that. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that. We want to make sure that we have covered all our bases, and so that would be part of it. And I think that'd be, definitely be part of the role of the liaison.
Thank you.
Heidi, and then I think Rick.
I move that we approve these modifications to the Child Care Code and instruct staff to bring this forward for official vote at another meeting.
Section.
Okay, so what did you just do?
I just moved that we approve it and have the staff bring us the ordinance so we can vote on it officially at another meeting.
So not necessarily approve, but move forward?
Move forward to bring it in front of your, because to approve it, you're saying, "Let's approve it," and this would be the...
Well, don't we have to officially vote on the ordinance? Or can we just do it now?
No, you have to officially run the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you're approving the next step.
The concept of, yes.
Yep.
Sorry.
To prepare an ordinance, okay. So your motion is to move to prepare the ordinance to fix these? Okay, and that's the second. Rick, you had something before.
Well, I just, I just wanted to ask if there are any state regulations that control this drug approval process we're talking about? Are you aware of any state codes?
So I'm not. I would have to look into that because I just know that if there, if that's what their regulations are, the state, we can't be any less lenient than, so I can definitely...
So Tori, that would be a part of that, also that discussion, is to see what there was on that?
Could you check on that and let me know? Because I don't want to take up people's time making a request to the chair of the advisory committee if it's the moot point.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Thanks.
Super, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Lyric to move the process forward to the next step.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Five, Stormwater Code Modification, Science and Environment. Science and Environment staff will present, will present proposed revisions to Municipal Code 8.52, Stormwater Management.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here today. I want to talk about a couple proposed changes to our stormwater code. And just to give you an idea of why we're even doing this, kind of what our motivation is here. With our current stormwater permit, we are required to develop a private stormwater facility maintenance program. So what that means in a nutshell is that for commercial properties and also some subdivisions, if the stormwater facilities are privately owned, we are developing a program to ensure that those facilities are being maintained and are functioning correctly. And so we're working on that process right now, but really, one of the first steps is to make sure that our code can support this required program. So we went through and revisited our stormwater ordinance. And overall, it really, it did support a lot of what we want to do, so that was great. But there were a few things we wanted to add or clarify within that. And so the first change is in our applicability section here. I've highlighted the addition. But basically, as it read, it really was applying to new development and redevelopment. But for this program, we want to make sure it applies to all existing facilities. And so it's just a small addition to say that permanent and temporary stormwater management controls constructed as part of any activities listed in this chapter within the city are also subject to this chapter. So just to clarify that, you know, even if it's a really old facility that we don't have as much information on, it still must fall, or must be maintained up to our design standards. Along with that, in talking with legal, we had another clarification we wanted to make within this related to that program. Oh, why is it on? Sorry, slow it down. Within the stormwater chapter, we have a section, "Violations Deemed a Public Nuisance." This is separate from the broader code. It's really focused on stormwater facilities. And, you know, through this program, really, our goal is to work with, you know, the property owners and, you know, homeowners associations, whoever that responsible party is. So, you know, we're hoping to avoid having to do abatements. We want to work with people, but you have to have a process in place, right, in case that does not work. And so in talking with legal about this, the one addition we wanted to make here, or clarification really, is that should we need to do an abatement? And right now, it says it would be abated or restored by the city. But we've spoken with the Streets Department, talked about this program a bit, and, you know, this would really be taking place in the... And, you know, this would really be taking place in the summer, which as you know, is a very busy time for the streets department. And so we don't want to have them be beholden to do this work. And so it's very likely that it would be a contractor doing that. So we wanted to add that in just to, to be clear. And this would be paid for by the property owner. So it's not that, you know, hiring a contractor would cost us more money. We're not paying for that. But just having that bit of clarification in there. And then finally, just.
Okay, hold up, hold up, hold up. We got Roger on Claudia.
This is really over here. If, if it's a pond that's put in by a developer and they have a homeowners association that assume, I guess, control of that pond, would the abatement then be put on every one of the houses as part of that association?
If it's a, if it's an established HOA that's got a governing board and actually is functioning, then absolutely so is.
I guess our history with HOAs are that they're pretty proactive when they first have people move in and they kind of fall by the wayside after a while. So how do we have any teeth here? How do we have any enforcement ability? Because who really owns the pond?
Well, if the HOA is, is not active after several years, but they're still an entity, that there's still people that are beholden to the provisions of that HOA. And so unlike state code, it's interesting that city code, we can go after entities, not individuals. The criminal, state criminal code, that's very rare. So yeah, we could, even if they're not active, there's still somebody that's responsible for that portion of the ownership.
In theory, we could say, you need to get your HOA going or coming after your larger scale.
I mean, there's a lot of details in that that we'd have to work through.
But I mean, you know, in theory, we can, it could just be a warning shot, so to speak. This HOA needs to be reactivated. You've got some problems that are going to fall on all of you. You can be proactive or reactive or reactively.
Claudia?
So with regard to who's, who's paying? My, my assumption is, is that if the city has to do abatement, it's because the property owner isn't doing it. So then how, what's, how is, how are you going, how are we going to get them to pay? Is it lean?
It could be. So this is part of the, you know, we're, I'm working with some of the engineers and we talked with some folks in legal about how this would actually play out and how we would charge that. Right now, I'm kind of going through and looking at, like with the HOAs, ones that are defunct, how, how do you even have the right contact information with people? So I'm working through that part right now. And I'm happy to come back once we have a more fleshed out program to really present to you our, our approach with that. But that is one option that has, has been discussed. But I, but I don't have a final answer for you. I'm not sure what our best option will be.
So then there's really no guarantee that the homeowner's going to pay for anything. I mean, if we do abatement, we have to presume that at this point at least, right, until you can get everything sorted out and worked, that if we end up doing abatement, we, we can, we have to assume that, that that's going to be at our expense.
Well, we're not, you know, this program won't likely be implemented until fiscal year 2022. So we're not going to be doing any of this until then. And, and again, it's really, you know, I've, I've talked to, you know, some other communities in Idaho and actually in some other states, but you know, Idaho is obviously the most relevant of, that have had this requirement in their permit earlier than we did. And so I've reached out to a bunch of folks, which is great because they're just, you know, they're willing to talk through all the misfalls and the, the things they're still trying to work through on that. And so that has really helped guide me a lot in this. And so really the sense I got from those is the communities that really try to work with the people, you know, they're meeting them one-on-one, they're saying, hey, we're going to do an inspection. Come out with us, let's talk through it. They have much better compliance than typically the bigger cities that they send out mailings, say do it through the internet, you know, they don't have that relationship established. They, you know, from, from my conversations, they don't have great compliance. And so our goal is to create those relationships and, you know, make sure that, you know, we, we want this to happen, but how, when can we make it happen for you? How can we get to a place that's good for, for, you know, we are meeting those standards, but we can appreciate that sometimes it's difficult to get someone to come, you know, if it's heavy maintenance, say that needs to happen, it can be difficult to get someone within a timeframe, right? And so we want to work through that with them as long as they're having that conversation with us.
Well, that's a great customer service approach to, to this because after all, that is our business, right? So thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got Linda, then Chris.
I just wanted to add on the abatement issue because you're talking obviously about a, a specific type of abatement, but we do other kinds of abatement in the city too. And, and it seems that our police and, and street department who've been, been involved in the other types of debatement, up, abatement, excuse me, have said similar things that working with people and going out and building those relationships makes that process go a whole lot better than just issuing citations and letters and things like that. But to really go out and, and try to work with them and build relationships, that that's the more successful route. There have been times where we end up, you know, that we can't recoup the costs and the city has had to pay for things, like if somebody passes away or something like that. There've been situations like that. But it seems like those situations where we're doing abatement, building those relationships with people is really important. So I'm glad to hear that, that that's the way you're going on this too. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I'd just like to get some clarity around what state level assistance, if any, exists for, for stormwater issues? Because I, I've heard a few times in having various water discussions over the years from prior to being on council to the present day, I keep hearing that there is actually state money available to support these kinds, some of these efforts. I don't know anything about the details. That's why I'm asking the question. And that Pocatello has not necessarily taken advantage of those opportunities. And I, I just am trying to get some clarity because apparently there isn't clarity currently in the community around that issue.
I, I'm not aware of any state assistance, but I saw someone walk in who might.
Hannah Sanger, science and environment administrator. There is no estate assistance for this currently. Hopeful now that the state has taken over the stormwater program that they'll provide that because there are a lot of smaller communities in Pocatello that are going to be going through the same scenario, but they're further down. It'll be a few years before they get there. The state has a big lift with the, them taking over the NIPD's program, the management of all these permits for water quality. And so I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful in three years we'll start to see something. But right now I have seen zero. We haven't even had a meeting about, from this, that the state has organized that just says, hey, here are the rules and regulations. Actually, no, correct. We've had training on how to submit our permits and our, and annual reports. So that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Heidi?
I move that we instruct staff to prepare these changes to the ordinance and bring them forward for vote at future meeting. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Lyric. Connie, could you please call the room?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Tatum?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to agenda item six, wildland, wildland engine capital replacement consideration, fire department. Fire department staff is seeking council's guidance and approval to purchase the department's highest capital priority, wildland engines. The quote, the quoted maximum cost for, for three wildland engines is $499,800. Funding would be sourced from the fiscal year 2021. Fund balance for two of the wildland engines and a donation, and a donation, if available, would be applied to fund the third wildland engine.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Chief Gates. A lot has changed since I wrote this. So at this point, the, the key is I don't have funds for two. I have funds for one. That's, I kind of estimate that I had about $250,000 extra after I looked at my overtime. And so I think at this point, it's better to say I only have funds for one. We've now gotten three bids, not just one bid. This bid was relying on a Nevada company who said they would get it to us fairly quickly at this point. They're probably looking at October, November. We have a bid from a Utah company that seems like they could get a little faster. But literally all the dates that they're getting are really towards the end of our wildland season that we could get. We have looked at used. The used stock is not very available. And if you go into used, it's reasonable, they're nearly the price of a brand new vehicle. My recommendation at this point would be, we have a bid from BME, which is Boise Mobile Equipment. They are out of Boise. They are an Idaho company. They do almost all of the federal trucks. They have a huge contingency of federal. Their estimated delivery date would be 10 months. Their quote was 169.6. They have a better warranty and that is what my wildland committee recommended as their truck of choice. It also ties into my desire is to purchase like trucks. And part of that is similar to what we did with our fire engines is that the more they're like for each fire station, the consistency as firefighters might move from station to station, there is no operational inconsistencies going from trucks in a wildland environment. Don't know about the donor at this point. So the check is in the mail. We haven't heard the final on that, but that would be something that we'd like. And I should remind you, we did put in for the assistance to fire grant for one unit. At this point, that still has not come back yea or nay. So we're kind of waiting on that as well. In order to get on their schedule, we need 50% down. And then once you get your 50% down, that gets you in the queue and they will build it as soon as possible. And the rest is in my narrative. We have a 91, 97, and two 2002s, all in excess of what they really should be. And they're, they've all been ridden hard. I would take our two best units, the two 2002s, as we replace these units and move those to what we call reserve status. Those units would be available for the deployment. Just to clarify, we would not be sending these new units out on deployment during our own wildland season. They would be here to ensure that we're protected. But we might send them, if you look around America and just the thing that I was talking about this morning, there's a lot of fires that happen back east and in the south long before we enter our wildland season when we still have snow on the ground. And I'm very comfortable sending units down there during those seasons. But when we're at the height of ours, I'm not going to send any of our frontline rigs anywhere. So.
Okay, it looks like I have a lot of questions. So I'm going to go Rick, Linda, Heidi. Okay, we'll go there and then we'll see what's happening on the other side here for a minute.
My question is, is the Boise company building comparable trucks, the same chassis, same basic equipment?
They're probably better built. They're, they're well constructed. They don't get the federal contract by building kind of a... The one that, they're on the, they're all on buyer's group, so they can be purchased as under contract for governmental contract.
But they're Dodge 5500?
I, I can't speak to the chassis. Normally we can either get a Dodger, and I'm not, just to be clear, I don't really care the chassis. I turned to my mechanic and asked him which one he would recommend and which one he feels he would work on. But it's going to be an equivalent chassis of that type. So a Dodge, it will not be, it may or may not be this spec. This was the Nevada spec. So, and I'm happy to come back to you at the next council meeting with the more accurate spec, if that's the desire. This was originally not supposed to be an action item. It was originally supposed to be just a information and get some guidance. So my plan was to come back for the July 14th with whatever your desire is.
Okay, Linda?
I wanted to ask about the donation. So you said things have changed and now instead of money for two, we have money for one. But does, and I know you haven't heard back on the grant yet. But ultimately we want to.
Four.
Get four, exactly. So my question is, does this change in the funding situation you have available right now? Or we have? Does that affect the grant in any way or the donation in any way?
Doesn't really affect the grant and I, I can't speak to the donation. I don't know enough about even who the donation's from. It's, it is just one of those, I think I have a donor. It's the mayor who knows about it and I'm not going to.
So I've reached out and talked to a few people about maybe a donation. If, the concern was we not, not getting the grant and needing a vehicle this year. Well, that's not a reality. We're not going to end up with a vehicle this year because we still don't know about the grant. And the donor was, I, I talked to a few people and I've got a person that said that he would donate enough for a truck if the grant didn't come through. So I've reached out to him and said, look, the grant still hasn't been decided yes or no. We really need four of these. Are you still okay with just a donation for, for one of them? And he's considering it, mulling it over. And I, I personally believe that he'll be okay with that. He just wanted, he was saying, look, if we don't get the grant, I know we need them. We still need them. It's just a matter of.
So that would mean, if, if that person comes through and we, worst case scenario, don't get the grant, that would mean two?
That sounds like two, yes.
Okay, okay. I just want to kind of see where we're standing here.
Yes.
Okay, Chief, I totally get where you're coming from on asking me. So I'm not, I'm not disputing at all the validity of the need and I know that the one broke down and I know it's a concern. Where I'm coming from is, we've had a lot of discussions in budget meetings and things about how we can still continue to give raises to employees and things like that. And, and we've discussed, maybe we can't always get all of the equipment and all of the raises type of a concern, right? So where I'm feeling the most comfortable right now, I know the one is like at risk of breaking down and the others are old, but they're still functioning. I feel right now the best about hoping and praying for the grant and the donor and not doing any additional at this time. But we'll keep it on our radar and we know it's a concern. But I don't, I don't really want to use any of the fund balances because we might be needing that for other things that we discuss later.
So the, the thing is not asking for more money from this year is using money that has been prepared but not, or been prepared, but approved, but in the budget, but not utilized because it's personnel.
Okay, but that would roll over and potentially helping other areas also, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It could.
Yep.
So we just saw, the chief saw an opportunity.
Please don't hate my guts, Chief. I know.
I understand, I understand the difficulty of this.
The chief saw an opportunity, and I think it was a good opportunity to be able to take some savings that we've experienced over this last year in the fire department to get something, a capital need that we needed and that we are eventually at some point going to need. And so that's, and I, I thought it was a good idea and stuff. So I'm going to have Chief make a comment, then I have Chris and Roger.
And I would just add, so under our cap, when we met as a staff about the capital issues, I pulled these off of that as a capital need with the concept that I would purchase them. And then we put the fire aerial apparatus in. If we don't execute this, then I would reestablish the brush truck as the number one issue over the aerial. And, and that's just kind of, the nuts of this are, we, we have a continuing capital need that's not going away. And our aerial apparatus is due for replacement and we have other things. So just if we are going to not purchase the brush truck this year under these funds, then I would still request that for consideration in lieu of the ladder truck next year as my number one priority. If that makes sense?
And Chief, if we don't purchase one this year, that means next year when we do get to this point again, we're still.
10 months out.
10 months out.
At least.
So we're looking at not this year, not next year, but the year after that. We're looking three years out for.
How often can you get a grant? Like can we get one now and later?
Oh, I can apply for a grant every year.
But then we're waiting to get it here.
Yeah. So, okay, Chris?
Yeah, and you've already clarified that this is, the money for this is, has already been levied. So that answers one of my questions. What in your, based on your research with used. What in your, based on your research with used units, you said that it appears used units go, I mean, in decent condition, go for close to what a new unit does. What is, what do you believe would be our chances in terms of selling the units that would become our surplus units essentially?
So our 91, the one that we're replacing right away, it's, it would normally would be something that we would end up donating to a local fire department around here because it's way better than the nothing that they have.
Right.
You know, the Incomes and the Aramos, they might take that, and that benefits us from the perspective of, it bolsters our community's capability, and they will likely use it two or three times in a given year, unlike us, who were running 30 or 40. So I would say that the value of that one is pretty nil.
Okay. And what, what about the others? I mean, I think two of them are from 2000s.
So the 2002s, we might get a little. They were all federal surplus, meaning we got them after the feds used them for four or five seasons, then surplus them. We put a lot of money into refurbishing them, and then we've used them, like I said, our newest is a 2002, so going on 20 years old. Again, I don't think you're going to get a lot for it, I mean, just because they're pretty worn out.
Okay. And then, we seem to be able to do these interdepartmental loans, which I'm still a little unclear about how we do that, but the street department, I believe, seems to be the department that is able to loan money to other departments in the city. And so I'm wondering, I'd like a little clarity around whether or not we would be in a position to essentially self-finance. And as I say, this is, this possibility only recently came to my attention, so I haven't had time to do the research necessary to fully understand the accounting mechanisms involved.
So the street department is a taxing fund, and it cannot, and we do not do interdepartmental loans with that. The only interdepartmental loans that we can do are with our utilities. And so the utilities can do that as long as the council is prepared or is okay with that. There's a reimbursement mechanism. We do that in an open meeting and a public meeting and all of that stuff. And so the utilities can do an interdepartmental loan if needs be, and, for example, the South Valley Connector is one that we've done that. We do a few of them. That's not something that we try to make a practice of in any way, shape, or form, but we do pay for those by the taxes, and the street department in that example was the department that inherited the road. They were the ones that got to reimburse the thing, so.
So what are the possibilities in a situation like this relative to that sort of creative financing?
That would be more of an attorney legal question, probably. I personally don't think I'd be super comfortable doing that, but...
I mean, legally, it's allowable. I think it's more of a generally accepted county principles question, quite honestly, and you currently have a CFO that has stated in a public meeting that he's not a big fan of interdepartmental loans. Not to say that can't be done under those principles as well, but I guess that's all I have to say, but there's just some downfalls to it. There's some transparency issues involved with it. Like the mayor said, everything would be done in an open meeting, so there would be no problems that way. But I would strongly suggest from a legal perspective, at least, that if you have other options, that those be explored first.
It looks like our CFO is watching and paying attention, so he's coming here to answer questions, it sounds like, or it looks like.
I may not have heard the entire discussion, but I did hear a question related to interdepartmental loans, and I believe what the mayor said was that utility funds could be used as the basis for making those types of loans. But just to clarify, I believe what the chief is asking for is to utilize the general fund?
Oh, no, I understand.
Okay. So there wouldn't necessarily be, I didn't exactly run over here, but I walked fast, so I'm breathing a little bit harder than I usually do. But, so, if there were a need for an interfund loan, which would be from one fund to another, typically, you would want to use funds that do not have utility rates associated with them, because that would be a little bit of an issue. You don't want to muddy the waters as it relates to your utility fee assessment and how you derive what those fees would be. So a loan between a utility fund and a nonutility fund would not necessarily, and even within or between the two utility funds, would not necessarily be recommended. The general fund can make loans to other funds. It requires the city council to approve it. The sanitation fund, in the particular case of what occurred with the South Valley interchange, there was a loan by virtue of the fact that the sanitation fund paid for some of the costs associated with that. And from what I have come to understand, the street fund did not have sufficient cash at that time to allow for the expenditure to be directed to the street fund for a street fund project. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag, but bottom line is, if there is a need for an interfund loan, I would probably stay away from the utility funds and more related to the general fund and non-fee-related funds. I don't know if Jared clarified. I heard, I didn't know if I heard you talking on my run over here, but, yeah.
Not to have specificity, but...
So I stand corrected. We've always done the utilities, so that's what, it always done.
It happens to the best of us, so no problem there. Thank you, thank you. I have a better understanding. I'm not sure I could repeat it back to you.
I didn't do a good job of saying it either, so.
In a, you know, accounting-wise and in accurate form, but I get it, so thanks. I, you know, this kind of request for me really encapsulates a critical issue that I think this council needs to grapple with. And that is, that as far as I can tell, particularly from the list of needs that we were given, we have a large number of needs, many of them equipment, that our departments believe they require in order to provide the level of services to the community, and in this case, community safety, that they, as professionals, believe is appropriate. And it appears to me that we are, at least momentarily, not in a position, we are in a position where we have to start to choose between some of the items that result in high-level, the continuance of high-level services to our community, and being able to afford the number of staff members that we have had the luxury of affording to now. And I believe that as a council, we need to, and there is no good choice, let me be clear, I'm not happy about the two choices I believe I presented with. But I believe we have to have a discussion about whether or not, to what degree do we value and consider the professional opinion of our departments relative to services and safety for the community versus, of course, not wanting to curtail staff, not wanting to, certainly, hopefully, not having to do it through layoffs, maybe being able to do it through, to take care of reducing staff through transfers and attrition. But I believe we can no longer avoid the critical conversation about what we're hearing. We have a lot of large expenditures, and I know there are council members who do not like the term kicking cans down the road, but I don't have a better, I don't have a better phrase to encapsulate that. But I believe we have got to stop kicking cans down the road, and we have got to come to terms with the fact that we may have to find, we may have to do more, or at least the same, with fewer people because we're not flush. And that's not, that has nothing to do with you, Chief. That has nothing to do with Mr. Krueger. It has to do with this council having the courage to have the critical discussions that I believe we need to have.
Roger?
I had a couple of things. First, I really understand, I think we're getting exponentially every year into a more of a wildland situation. I think this year's illustrated, I think the Northwest being a tender cake already. When June is usually a time of year you don't expect that in the Northwest, the town that blew up in Bridge, Columbia, believable, was, it just was gone. So I really understand that. The second thing, though, is 10-month delay, if you order now, you're just getting it about May next year, right? So I understand the need for one. I'm kind of with Heidi on the others. The other thing, I have a feeling that there may be some price leveling that occurs because of the shortage of components for a lot of automakers this year. And when that levels out, I think the demand will kind of soften somewhat, you know, over time. So I think maybe we could be looking at kind of a price stabilization on some of these, these things going forward, get one, and then hopefully we can get into the mix for the other ones. And if you get the donation and you can order two at the same time, that would be my preference.
So just to clarify, the, we're actually getting last year's price from BME. They're maintaining, they actually have, their prices gone up because of materials, kind of speaking to what you're talking about, the lack of materials has driven the price up, but they're actually honoring a quote that they had given us last year in that quote.
Well, I'm thinking, though, that there may be more access to used vehicles, because I have a pickup that I bought, it's an old pickup compared to a lot of them, but its prices, it's outstanding what I've been offered on it. And I just know that the used vehicle market is way overdone right now.
So Chief, isn't that your request right now, is to buy one, and then if we can get the donation?
Correct.
Buy two?
Correct.
That was, that was the request.
I was just saying, I'll go on record, I think we ought to get the one, and I know there's serious discussions we've got to have, but I think we're an urban interface community that's got a high risk, and if we don't do this, we're not exercising our domain as stewards of safety.
So I've got Claudia, and then, look like Linda.
So Chief, I just want clarification. So we've been, so we've had three, right? We've had three of these trucks? Four?
No, we have, we have four.
We have four?
We've always had four.
Oh, I thought you said 194 and 202s.
No, we have a 1991, a 97, and two 2002s.
Okay, okay, so I missed.
And the one we're trying to replace is the 91. It's...
It's the oldest one.
It's the oldest one.
Okay, so, and there's, don't take this the wrong way. Is the reason why we need to have four, so that two can go on deployment and two can stay here?
No.
We need four.
We need four. We put one in every fire station. Every fire station has what we call the wooie, wildland urban interface. They all have wildland urban interfaces. Station one has all of City Creek. Station two has all of the West Bench. Station three has all of Centerfield Ridge, and station five has, of course, my nightmare, Johnny Creek. So every single one, and one of the things that we talked about at this is, if you want to stop the catastrophic event, you have to be able to get there quickly and put the fire out when it's super small. If you get ahead of steam on a fire, we're not going to put it out, and it will burn structures. And so you're really, that speed and effectiveness of getting there quickly. If I have to have one, and it's trying to get all the way across town, that fire develops very quickly in high winds, low RH, and you will, it's, then it's a nightmare. It's going to go moving.
I think you said the Arco Desert was clocked at 55 miles an hour, and that's slow. I mean, that's not generous.
Well, I mean, and the only reason I asked the question is because you did mention that you would not send a new one on deployment, but, so I just, I guess my concern is this, if we're spending money because we need this, then I would not be interested in having these vehicles go anywhere other than be right here for us.
So let me just try and make sure you understand. So the way we run a system where we have what are called frontline units, and those are, these are right now, these, the 91, 97, and two 2002s. They're available during our wildland season to go out, in our own community, to put fires out in our community. We also have, and right now, I have two of our very oldest, and they're just pickup trucks with what we call a skid load in the back. They're not very functional, but we still have those in stock as well because we need that as a reserve capacity, meaning that if I do get the Charlotte Fire, I need more than four. And so if I can call in overtime people to staff the two extras, then they can go staff those as well. So now I have six available trucks, but they're really pretty old. So my goal is to maintain six total, and the six total are two reserves and four frontlines. All of our frontlines are using Tom Kirkman's, you know, fleet, 12 years. They're all well beyond the 12-year lifespan. And this is an emergency vehicle, not, you know, a city vehicle that goes and does utility billing.
Right.
Not to discredit utility billing, but it has to be ready, primed, and ready to go all the time. So, and when I tell you that we would send them out, when they're still on the ground here, I don't have a wildland threat, but there's other parts of the nation that do, and I can deploy those units then and get money back that will help us fund this going forward, and so that's the benefit of having those.
Yeah, it does. I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be clear. I would not be interested in saying, "Now we have four, but only two of them are in town," because, you know, some other places.
The only time we would ever send them out is when we are not in a threat.
When we don't have a threat.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Linda, and then Roger.
I just wanted to go back to one earlier comment. I just don't agree with the idea that it is a choice between personnel or staff and equipment and needs that departments have. I think it's incumbent upon us to do both. So I don't think that that's a choice that we have to say we're going to do one or the other. We need staff. They're the ones who provide the service, but we need the equipment that we need for them to do their jobs. So we have to make tough choices, and I absolutely agree with that, but we have to find a way to do both of those things. And I was thinking, because of the funds being already budgeted, because of the schedule that you've quoted, like, if we don't do this now, then we get in line again next year, so we'll be losing another year, and because of, as Roger already mentioned, the fire seasons are getting worse and worse every year, so I think wildland fires in particular are becoming a more pressing problem even more than they already were. So because of all of that, I move that we do approve the purchase for one truck now from the Boise vendor that you have recommended.
Second. So I have a quick question, and Roger has a comment still before we go to any vote. My question is, is, the motion is to purchase one. If the donor comes through, can we purchase two?
If the donor and the grant, I would say two.
Yes.
But if not, then just one.
Well, the donor was going to be if we didn't get the grant.
So the donor would, if we, if I can get the donor to buy... So the donor would, if we, if I can get the donor to buy one outright and we pay for this one, we would end up with two. If we get the grant, which I don't know when that's going to happen, then answer on that, then we would bring that grant back in front of the council to, to purchase a third one, I believe, but.
I guess where, where I was at on that is the hope that the one would be paid for by either the grant or the donor. And if we're able to get the grant and the donor, then we would get the two.
Yeah.
And if for some reason we don't get either the grant or the donor, then it would come out of the fund balance. That's where I was at on it.
So the, the motion, though, is to move forward with at least one, possibly two if we can get the grant. And I'm pretty confident that the grant will, not the grant, the donor will come through.
Which if the donor's watching, you're awesome, by the way.
I doubt that they're watching. I doubt that, but if, maybe, they, you know, they could be, but then the third one would be the grant. So the motion today would be to move forward, bring this to council next week to purchase with the approval up to two with the donor being the second one. And using, using money from this year to purchase the one. That would have nothing to do with the grant. So that would be, that's what.
So I might, I might be no on that then, but.
But that's the motion, though. Now, Roger?
I have a question that I didn't have a minute ago. A lot of times, we can go ahead with grant, we can go ahead and purchase, but we can backfill with grants. Is that a possibility here?
Could we get reimbursed?
Yeah, you know what I'm saying is, we've, we've got it in the pipeline, and would a grant allow us then to use it to backfill the pipeline, so to speak?
I am not positive on that. I, I think that that would almost be supplanting if you look at it, not being the CFO, but he's nodding his head. I, I think that you have to, you know, from the time you're authorized for the grant, the purchase agreement would have to occur after that. So I don't think you can get the grant and then, and I, to be clear, they were supposed to make announcements back in April, and they have made very few, and they do not seem to be moving very fast. I don't know.
They had to wait till fire season. That's right. So, okay, so that was a question. The other thing is, the reason I'm really for this is, I really applaud the heroic efforts that happened on the Charlotte Fire, but I was up on Chinese Peak watching that fire develop, and it took an act of nature to, to not override our system. I saw the wind change from driving it up the valley towards Blackfoot to reversing and going back. And one of the key components of that fire's fast spread was the fact that one of the volunteer fire stations couldn't get in, out their door. And so that was the delay factor that you're talking about. If you can get there fast, you can knock it down hopefully before it really gets going. And, and so they're a kind of combination. That Charlotte Fire is a great illustration of not getting there fast, it's a great illustration of even with the best resources we have available, nature can overwhelm us. And so, you know, one of our best offsets to what fires can do is to be prepared, and equipment is a key component of that.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the room?
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Addison?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll see this next week on the agenda if you'll prepare a, for two of them, one with the donation and one without.
Correct.
If the donation comes through, you'll only order the one.
Be ready.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. Before we move to agenda item number seven, I've been, had some hand signals that we need a break, and so we're going to go ahead and take a break. I know our five-minute breaks take 10 minutes, but we will see what happens. Thank you very much for joining us after our break. It was a little longer than a five-minute break, but we appreciate you hanging in there with us. With that, we'll move to agenda item number seven, which is Title 16 subdivision text amendment. Planning and Development Services staff will be present to discuss the proposed updates of the subdivision regulation for the city of Pocatello.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Brett McLean, PDS Director. So this is some amendments that we have, we wanted to bring to you, to discuss with you prior to taking it to the Planning Commission and then on to City Council for approval. So just real briefly, Title 16 is our, essentially our subdivision ordinance, and some of the changes we want to make revolve around some transparency for preliminary plats or our developments. Currently, we don't require a public hearing for preliminary plats. State statute does not require that, but it is a pretty common practice in communities in Idaho to hold public hearings for preliminary plats. Now, state, state code does allow for people to request a public hearing, which we have happened, have had happen a couple of times since I've been here already. And so, and one of them, the applicant actually preemptively decided to have a public hearing before the neighborhood or neighbors requested that. So one of the things that we're proposing is to change that in our code, that a preliminary plat would be required to have a public hearing. It is held at the Planning Commission level. They're the decision-makers of preliminary plats, and that would give opportunity for public input at that time. And then those final plats can move forward following that preliminary plat. So that's one of the changes that we're proposing. The other significant thing that we are proposing with preliminary plats is that developers be required to include all of the, the area or, or property of a larger tract in that preliminary plat. So what we're seeing right now is anything over five lots requires a preliminary plat. So that can be really quite a small area, and we're seeing developers just bring in little chunks, and it makes it really difficult for city staff to plan ahead for utilities and roads and how those larger tracts are actually going to develop out. And so what we're proposing is that if a developer owns a larger tract of land, that they bring in a preliminary plat to, to describe to us how we're going to serve these large areas with infrastructure. Now, those, those plans can be altered and changed, but it gives us as staff an opportunity to really plan ahead, especially as we're starting to see development encroach on the benches, and you have a lot more issues with infrastructure as you go up, up into the benches. And so that's the other significant change that we're making is to require those large tracts to come in and then phase those preliminary plats so a developer can then bring final plats in phases and not have to do the whole thing, but they can then just bring in those final plats in phases. And in the end, that will actually speed up the development process because they won't have to go through their preliminary plat each time they are moving forward with another plat. That preliminary plat will be established and they can just bring final plats forward, and it'll, it'll speed up that development process in the end. And so those are the two substantial changes that we are making in the Title 16. A few other minor things as far as the application and the number of sets of plans, changing some of the wording for the Planning Commission as they, right now, it's, the preliminary plats are a recommendation, and they're actually a decision-making body on those. So changing some of that language and then, so that does allow for appeals of the Planning Commission's decisions to happen. Right now, if, if, the way it's worded currently as a recommendation, you can't really appeal a recommendation. And so just to clarify some of the, some of that language. And then there's also some changes in the final plat application requirements, and so as an applicant who will bring forward a final plat, if it doesn't meet the preliminary plat exactly, maybe a few, a few small discrepancies or changes in the number of lots or where lot lines line up, those things could be adjusted administratively. We don't have to go through a whole preliminary plat process for just some minor changes, but if there's something significant, that would have to go back to a new preliminary plat process. So those are some of the, the changes that we're proposing. I don't know if you have any questions for me regarding those changes?
We've got Rick, did you have one, Heidi?
No, go ahead.
Rick?
I'm just wondering if these changes are going to increase cost to developers?
No, it, it, maybe insignificantly, a little bit more for mailing. They'll have to send out some mailings, but the, the application process will cost the same. There is just the mailing costs with the publication of the public hearing, so.
The other is, is a legal question. Is there a legal difference between recommendation and decision?
Yeah, there is. As Brent stated, it's really hard to appeal a recommendation, and what could end up happening is a vicious cycle of, of going back and forth and delaying the development by virtue of exercising that right. So a, a decision, if it's appealed, it's upheld or it's denied and we're done and we move forward with the process.
Anything else?
No, because I don't, I don't know of any other instance where a recommendation is subject to appeal. So I think this is a good change.
Okay, thank you.
Linda?
I also think this is, good changes is, are, good changes, sorry. I particularly like the emphasis on being able to plan better for the long term and look at the big picture here and so we can make better decisions. And I think that's a really good way to go. And because of that, I'm going to move to approve these changes.
So, okay, so I heard a second. So I just want to be clear again, when you move to approve these changes, are we writing the ordinance, rewriting the ordinance?
So what I'm looking for right now is just to move forward with these to the Planning Commission, because we need to get their recommendation before we move it to
So the, the motion would be more of approval to
To move forward.
Move forward with the Planning
Yes.
Commission. Okay. Okay, so if you're good with that, second, you're good with the way that motion is, we have, do have a question.
Yeah, sorry, just, could you speak a little bit to the time for staff that would be involved in adding the additional hearings? Because I totally understand the desire for transparency and for people to feel like their voice is heard, but also experience tells me that sometimes we have the same repeat, people don't like to get up during every public hearing and talk about not necessarily relevant things. So, and I know that, you know, we have constraints with staff time and lots of things that are bogging you down in your department already. So I would just, I love efficiency, so I would not like to, in an effort to do good, you know, cause ourselves more grief down the road. So can you kind of speak to that a little bit?
That's understandable. So as far as time, it really won't increase the staff time. We still have to prepare staff reports, we still have to have a, a public meeting at Planning Commission. The only difference is at that meeting is an opportunity for the public to comment. So you may have a longer hearing at the Planning Commission level.
But it's not
But it doesn't, it doesn't create more work for, for us because we're still fielding the questions, we're still answering questions. It just gives that transparency, transparency and a chance for the public to make comment on that preliminary plat.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you then. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the room?
Lurick?
Yes.
Yes. Just sat up and fell asleep.
Yes.
Except I am, I guess.
Chita?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Title 17 zoning regulations text amendments. Planning and Development Services staff will be present to discuss the proposed update to the zoning regulations for the city of Pocatello.
All right, so I'll just stay here. This is Title 17, some amendments. You're going to see periodic amendments to our zoning ordinance as, as I've instructed my staff to kind of go through and clarify some of the things that we're finding are either hard to interpret or hard to enforce or question why it's there. And so you're going to see probably at least twice a year some, some text amendments to our code. But, so just to run through some of the, the high-level things here, and again, this is just a request to take this forward to the Planning Commission for recommendation. So we're looking at some definitions for lot, lot block and block face right, right away, some, to clarify some of, of those definitions as we move forward through the code. We're making some changes to tables to align the table that's in the Title 17 with Title 16 for decision-makers. There's a, a line item in the zoning district use table that kind of gives an open-ended allowance for someone to come to City Council for an exception for any use. And based on normal planning practices, that, that is kind of an oddity, so we're proposing to remove that. And the proper channel is to go through a, a rezone request or instead of just a blanket exception that puts you as City Council in a, in a difficult position. So we're going to remove that from the code. And then just some clarification on some notes for where residential uses can be in the CG zone, which is our commercial general zone, and our central commercial zone, the CC zone, to allow for residential uses on main levels instead, instead of only on upper levels. But it would allow only behind storefronts, not to occupy storefront, to preserve those commercial uses, but still allow for residential uses. Looking at some changes to our sensitive land standards, clarifying what land is actually, that applies to, it's really kind of vague, so we're going to try to specify that a little better. Some of the major changes we are making in our original town site overlay, which is the older parts of town, where our current zones don't necessarily match what's built as far as setbacks and, you know, how the, the actual property is developed. So we're looking at some things to encourage infill, such as allowing for an average of setback on a block face, instead of requiring just a set setback that you can actually look what's developed and average those setbacks based on what's developed. Modifying our accessory structure standards so they're unified throughout the city. You don't have some here that are different than other places. One major thing that we're looking at is in, just in the, the OTO overlay, is to change the parking requirement for single-family and, and two-family units to allow for counting on-street parking towards the parking requirement as well. So if you look at the way those, those neighborhoods are developed already, they don't meet the current parking requirements, and that's created a, a real difficulty for infill in that, those areas that, to infill and meet the current parking standards, it just doesn't pencil out. It's really difficult on those small lots to allowing for It's really difficult on those small law suit, allowing for both the combination of on-street and off-street parking. And then the other thing that we're looking at is clarifying what areas are required to have planting strips and how to determine what size of planting strip needs to be installed to maintain the character of those neighborhoods. And so those are some of the major changes in that overlay that we're looking to change. And then we're also are trying to clarify our slope standard requirements for development, when that's triggered and exactly, you know, how that will apply to some of our developments on the slopes. So just trying to really clarify some of those things. So the details of those changes are in your packet. You can look at those. Hopefully you have already. But if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
So Heidi?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you for on both the last item and this one for, I guess, reaching out to get some preliminary comment. I think you had a comment from a developer, maybe like a landscape architect or something. But I thought that some of the points they raised were good things for consideration. Like you just brought up planting strips and how they talked about certain areas, maybe it still has a tree, but it could have like a bike thing or something. Are those things that you would, I guess, that would be kind of flushed out when the planning and zoning reviews it? Or do you think any additional changes that they mentioned might be warranted at this time?
Yeah, some of them may be warranted. We can look at, and I know which ones you're talking about specifically. I think what we really want to achieve is consistency in the neighborhood. And the way we have things written is that we use either that block and what is established already on that block or adjacent blocks to establish what those planting strips would be.
Okay.
And so you don't have a situation where you have one block that has a four-foot planting strip, then you go to the next block and there's none, and then you go to the next block and it's four-foot again. Just to create that consistency, as you're looking down the street, it feels like it belongs. And I think that is what will preserve the character of these neighborhoods that makes them a desirable place to be.
Yeah, I agree. So if there were like an infill and there were no planting strips on either side, you wouldn't be requiring, you know what I mean? They could just continue--
Yeah, if there weren't on either side, we're not trying to create something new. We're just trying to just--
Yeah.
Maintain what we have.
Well, I just had a question about that, since it said they are required. Like how would that--
Yeah.
It'd just be something you would tell them administratively?
Yeah, it'd be an administrative decision that we as a planning staff would come together, determine what is required, and then let the developer know what we'd work with engineering and figure out what we need, so.
Okay, thanks.
Linda?
I was curious about the slope standards--
Yes.
To, you said you're going to work on clarifying those. Could you just say a little bit more about what you'd be doing?
It's really a difficult process to describe. And that's part of the problem, is it's complicated. And one of the things that is required is a visual analysis of the slope, which that language is not very useful for what we're trying to achieve. So we're trying to get away from some objective analysis of it. We just really want to see, you know, what is slope and what isn't, and how much of that can actually be developed, and what do we need to preserve? And then really clarify when that geotechnical study is required for buildings. And so it's very clear and predictable. And so that's kind of what we're working on. The slope standards are, they are difficult to interpret right now.
Kind of vague.
Yeah. We just want to have a really clear and predictable way for developers to know how to calculate that.
I really appreciate hearing that. I have a friend that I hear from all the time who has experience in this area and has a lot of concerns about development on slopes. And she's always asking me about that. So I'm glad to hear that we're working on sort of made, standardizing that, clarifying, simplifying.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Claudia?
Could this be the appropriate place to put something in regarding zerscape on those planting strips or anything like that? Is this the appropriate document or?
As far as allowing it or requiring it?
Or more of a requiring going forward.
You could. We have a landscape section of our code that we could look at something like that.
Because I think as, clearly, I mean, water is always going to be the premium. And so I just think that if we can start requiring, you know, zerscape-type things and rather than, you know, lawn that we have to water an hour a day to keep it alive, I just think that that might be something that, the direction that we should go so that we can drink more.
This would be, this definitely be a place that you could apply something like that.
Okay, so how does that, how does that happen? Do you just, how does that happen?
How does it happen exactly?
How does, how do we include something like that? Is that something that the planning--
Yes.
--makes a decision on and then--
Right.
Includes it? Or do we formally say, could you please include something?
Well, and I think that's why it's here today, to kind of look for council input. But yeah, these things all have to go through the Planning Commission as well.
Correct.
So could you please include something like that?
But do we--
If that's the proper way--
I think--
--get to discuss whether we all want that or--
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm asking, what's the, how do you do that?
This would be a time to discuss that, yes. If that's, if that's a desire, then great. If not, then, okay, so.
I'm all in favor of promoting that. I don't know about making that a requirement. That is a little bit uncomfortable.
So how would you, you have a suggestion of not making it a requirement, but strongly encouraging it? What, I guess I'm asking--
Is it allowed right now?
Oh, yeah, you can do it.
Yeah, okay.
You can do it. The only thing that you, we have that's a requirement is there's areas that are required to be landscaped, which this would count. But there are tree requirements that you have to maintain trees along street frontages and things like that, that, and that may or may not play into the--
And there's a percentage of your property that has to have, that has to be landscaped or have vegetation.
Correct.
But you can have a choice as to what--
Yeah, how you do it.
Yeah.
We don't necessarily dictate exactly what kind of landscaping it has to be.
Right.
Heidi?
Yeah, let's not just leave me for a second. Aren't there some CCNRs that require it to be like grass? So we might be in conflict--
There might be, but--
--with that or some neighborhoods where--
We don't get involved with those.
Right.
The city doesn't enforce those. So they can do what they want. They can be more restrictive, but they can't be less restrictive than what the city code is. But we wouldn't get involved with that. So a CCNR could come in and say that, you know, if we required it, they couldn't say that you can't have--
Right, but it might be running contrary to what somebody's CCNRs have already--
We might be, yeah.
--required for that neighborhood. So I guess where I'm at, I'm all in favor of, you know, trying to do zerscaping and stuff like that. I would prefer, you know, you've heard me bring up before the idea about trying to get some of the places that are just dead and weeds into zerscaping. So it also goes with beautification, like we talked about in some of our main rail fairs or the university area or places like that. But I would rather not make it a requirement. You know, I think there are some neighborhoods that have a grass mow strip that is nice. And so I guess that's where I'm at at this point, is kind of letting people regulate themselves. And we can do some education on the benefits of it and stuff like that, but probably not make it like a requirement at this point.
Okay.
Chris?
Yeah, I would very much like to hear what, you know, the recommendations, what other cities in Idaho may or may not be doing. Because we're, I think we are, I mean, this year, water in Idaho is clearly front center. It's a huge issue. And I think there's clearly concern at the state level about how are we going to deal with water issues if current climate, weather, whatever your preferred term is, conditions remain the same, you know, because we're, what, 25-year, they're calling it, you know, this is sort of the newest version of a drought that is longer than 10 years. So this didn't just happen yesterday and you've been getting here. So I'd like to hear, you know, a little bit about, you know, what, how the state-level considerations and all of that, you know, might dovetail with this. And then I think the longer conversation, the larger conversation, is really going to depend on information that is difficult to get because our aquifer is so unique and that we don't have even necessarily all the information we could get. Because I think if we're wise, we're going to be looking at a long-term plan. And that obviously can't be done overnight or necessarily only by our staff. But I think we need to be really on top of whatever the Water Board and other state water entities are talking about, not necessarily doing, making decisions about. Because, I mean, we may be looking at water restrictions for, you know, personal property in the coming years. And I think we need to try to be at least up to speed, even if we can't be ahead of it. So I'd be interested in hearing a little bit more about, without causing staff to, you know, go off on a in-the-weeds PhD research project. I'm very interested in kind of hearing the bigger context within which we would be making this consideration.
Okay, well, I heard Claudia asked--
So the reason why I chose the word requirement is because, is because I lived in California for many years, and California's always in a drought, especially Southern California's always in a drought. And there have been many times over the years where water was restricted and you could only water twice a week for a very short amount of time. And so things looked terrible because it dies. And so rather than, and I think, I mean, if the conditions continue, we might very well be restricted. I would much rather drive through neighborhoods, especially new neighborhoods and stuff, and see some nice zerscape and some nice rock and some nice something, rather than a bunch of dead lawn that then people just give up on. So that was my rationale for using the word required. But because once the lawn is dead, people just leave it. It's like they're not gonna, it's very expensive to replace sod. Because once it's dead, it's dead. It's not just, oh, water it and it'll come back. So anyway, but that was just my explanation.
So I've got Roger, then Heidi, then Linda.
This is kind of an interactive dialogue. To Claudia's point, I've noticed a lot of homes already not watering this year. It's more so than I've ever noticed. Because they look at the long span of summer and they say, why water now and I'll give up? And so I understand that. I think there are ways to address a requirement without it necessarily being a requirement, but it can be an incentive. And we've already done some incentivizing by what our water rates are. Because we have one level and then you jump to another level after you use so much water. And it seems to me that if we want to be proactive in this, maybe we look at our, and this is a long-term look, but we look at our fee structure and we actually reward with a discount a proposal that comes in with a zerscape over lawn. You know, I'm just creating the dialogue on this issue. But I think there's some ways we can incentivize that. If somebody's coming in with a big development and they say we're going to zerscape, maybe we give them a decent discount for doing that. You know, we're going to have that requirement. It should bar the dialogue.
Absolutely.
Heidi?
Yeah, I think those are definitely some valid points that have been brought up. As far as what is proposed to us here today, I move to forward these proposals onto the Planning and Zoning Commission so they can provide feedback.
Thanks.
Okay, Linda had something and Rick had something.
Yes, I still have a comment. I absolutely am interested in hearing information. And I think, you know, there are ways we can move in the direction, as you said, of a requirement without actually saying it's a requirement or sort of gradually move towards that. But I think as part of the information gathering process, I would ask that you think about ways that we can sort of make that work that isn't a hardship for people. Because how are we going to have everybody in the city transition from lawn to zerscaping? Or are we going to grandfather people in that have lawns? I mean, just how that process would work. It is expensive, if you have lawn, to then change it to a zerscape landscape. So if it's a new person coming in or a new development or a new business coming in doing that, then, you know, they're starting from scratch, so it's a lot easier. But the transition from people that already have, or businesses that already have lawn to a different type of landscape could be very prohibitive for people. So I would be interested, as part of the information, thinking about how we would make that transition and not make it, you know, a hardship.
Absolutely.
Okay, Rick?
I want to shift gears and talk about Ryan Satterfield's letter. These changes, are you addressing his concerns about Title 17.05, about the city's complicated the building on Hillside process, increasing the cost of building homes, slowing the process and taking on additional liability? Is unnecessary?
I'd have to talk with him and see if this actually does answer those questions for him. Definitely, we, our intent is to not do that. We want to make that slope development easy and that we can, at the same time, preserve our slopes and the natural asset that we have in our mountains. But at the same time, recognizing that slope development does occur and it will need to occur. But there's a lot of costs that are associated with that slope development for the city as well, as far as maintenance goes. Those subdivisions that are built on the slope cost more to maintain than ones that aren't. And so, you know, are they the best development for us? That's something to look at, you know? But we do want to preserve our slopes as well. But at the same time, we want to encourage development and not prohibit it and complicate it. But there's a lot of liability that the city gets into as we take over these subdivisions that are built onto the slopes that we are trying to mitigate ourselves, that we don't incur. For instance, I don't know if you followed anything that happened with North Salt Lake, but there is a lot of lawsuits and issues that the city got into because of approvals of subdivisions on moving slopes. And they're still trying to get through those legal hurdles. So we have to be very careful as a city as we approve these developments as well. Because there are potentials, so.
I recognize the risk, and Boise has a whole subdivision that is sliding off the slope--
Yeah, and that's what's happening in North Salt Lake, too. The whole subdivision is moving, so.
And we have flooding issues.
So I think it's important for us to be doing that. So Chris, you have a comment and then we'll--
Yeah, this is just a short comment, and it echoes some of the comments that have been made. But I continue to appreciate the fact that you seem to be focused on transparency and on equity. and on equity across the city. And I think that has not always been a focus locally. And I, I appreciate that, continue to appreciate it. And I also continue to appreciate the fact that many times when you come to us, you are actually initiating versus simply responding to a question or a point, you know, from council. And I, I really, really appreciate that because, at least for me as a council member, that's what I rely on. That's why you are the expert. You and your staff are the experts in what you do. And I rely on that and I appreciate it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Stevens. Claudia, could you please call the room?
Adamson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to Agenda Item 9, Fiscal Year Budget Discussion. Council will consider the fiscal year 2021 budget and discuss recommendations to prepare the budget amounts necessary to meet notice requirements for the August 5, 2021 public hearing. Now, council, before we get going here, I do have a new list for you that will replace these big, the other bigger lists. We have had some discussions with the county, so we've been able to pull this. The main thing is, is your number, the number that was out there, General Fund was 500 and 588,000. Discussing with the county, we think that it's a conservative number here at this point of 453,000 with the way the assessments look and everything, and this would be keeping, taking zero of the 3%. Not any of the 3%. That's, that's where we are right now. There are obviously a number of ways that can, that can be solved. I think you have a couple of options. I would recommend, now it's up to the council, you have with, you have or have been given, and if, if we don't have them still, if you don't have them with you, this list that looks like this. If you don't have, I can get a copy of this for the council to have. But I think you have a number of options. Number one would be to, and maybe Jim can weigh in a little bit. Number one is to say, look, we're going to move forward. This is what we're gonna do. This is our tax ask. That's it. Mayor, figure out what to do with that $400,000 and go from there. We're not taking any of the 3%. I think that's an option. I think that you would want to split this up in two different, if it were me, to kind of keep them separated, the tax ask and then this. If, unless there's a desire to do any of these things with taxes, then we could obviously do that without a problem. That's, that's, would be up to you. We also have reserves that we could do some of these. This list has been, you've been given a list of 1 through 13, 1 through 13 of the top priorities of the city, or of the city staff that they have. And we can, we can, obviously you have, I don't know how many others, you've got five pages of list of requests in front of you. But I would, I would recommend separating the two unless you have a desire to take some taxes for this and then you would have to do something there. Jim, is there anything else before we turn the floor over to the council? Does everybody have this with them?
Yes.
Let me just say a couple of things, one of which is, I'm here to help through the end of July. I'll be here to help with the budget process. One of the elements that you need to do before the time of the public hearing is you have to have a publication that goes into the paper that says, this is what the budget is on a tentatively approved basis. That would be what's used in the public hearing. You have all of the options associated with if you want to now make any adjustments to the budget as we go through the process today. But once it gets published, you cannot add to the budget, you can subtract from the budget. So having that as kind of the basis upon which you might want to move through the rest of the process. The items that are included here are ordered by fund. I tried to do it in alphabetical order, but the general fund doesn't fall in the alphabet exactly the way it might otherwise. But I believe that's the most important fund as it relates to how you relate to how you want to go through this process. So as the mayor indicated, the deficit at this juncture is $453,766 for the general fund. As was indicated by the mayor, we did get some preliminary information from the assessor's office, which would, or from the auditor's office, that indicated that our new construction number is going to be higher than what I had anticipated when I put this budget together initially. That's the primary change between what you saw previously a week and a half ago and what you're seeing here. The mayor did say that we're not asking for any new taxes, but he did ask me to put in, if you look on the backside of this, where it shows green, at the bottom there, and I'm, this is not necessarily what we're advocating, but we're just letting you know that the 3% amount that would be generated would be $939,327. And in no way is that saying that we're a proponent of adding that to the taxes, but if you chose to deal with, as the mayor indicated, some of the capital projects, or one or two of the projects, whatever, that would be an option, is to use that 3%.
Did you share with me again where that 900,000? So that's.
It's, and I'm sorry, yeah.
The number.
First column, where it says revenue, and at the bottom it shows grand total, $121,512,568. So that's the total revenues that we would actually be asking for you to tentatively approve. And then if you added 939,000, that number would go up by that amount to $122,451,895.
I thought that council might want to know what was available if, if there was a desire.
The tax breakdown that is beneath that is a calculation based upon, essentially, each department that is included in the general fund has some revenues that they generate. So taking their expenditure amounts, less the revenues that they generate, and allocating property taxes based upon that initial allocation shows that, for instance, in the case of the police department, of the $30,791,347 proposed property tax levy, which does not include a 3% increase, does include new construction, of that amount, the police department is $11,279,758, or 36.63% of the total property tax levy. And then the next one down is the fire department, 18.95%. Those are things that you already knew, but essentially this breaks it down to let you know how much of the property taxes go to each part of the city's organization structure.
Where is library? Because I think you wrote us that library is almost 100%.
So library, if you go down, it's towards the bottom of the page there.
Oh, sorry.
And right below cemetery fund.
Yep, yep, sorry.
Yeah. And that's $1,853,397,6.02%. And in the case of the library, almost their entire revenue structure is based upon property taxes.
Okay, so I have Linda and Roger, and then Rick.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, and then we can continue our discussion, but I want to get a motion out there. I would like to approve the budget as presented here for publication and to publish with the full 3%, because we can always come down. But I would like us to not take that 3%. So the budget as proposed, we would not be taking any of that 3% in taxes, but we will publish high in order to just protect ourselves so that we don't then need to add anything.
If I could just speak to the motion for a moment?
That was confusing, yes, please clarify.
So today, what, what you would be doing would be tentatively approving, which means you're not making a motion to approve the budget at this point in time. It's only to allow for the publication of the budget.
Yes.
You make all of the elements of what you decide to do after you've had the public hearing, and then there's a ordinance and a resolution that would go along with that that would act as the actual approval of the budget process.
And that is what I meant, is that approve this for publication as presented here.
Okay, so, so the motion is for a tentative?
Yes.
Not approval?
Right, for publication.
With the understanding that we'll be publishing to include the 939, which is the 3%, but that our intent is to have.
To not take that.
The mayor and the finance department work together to not take any of the 3%.
Yes.
So they would have to figure out that 453,766 between now and our time when we officially.
Now in August, August 5.
Yes. Okay, so I will second that.
And I would like to clarify that point, too, is yes, because I forgot to mention that you would figure out that 453. My recommendation on that would be to take that from our excess reserves, general fund excess reserves, to cover that deficit. But that we would work that out.
Okay, but that's, that's not part of the motion, though, that's.
I'm just clarifying.
That's just clarifying. Okay, so we have a motion, but before I vote on the motion, I already had Roger and Rick, and then I've heard Claudia say a few things before we vote on that motion, so.
And, and I'm way outside of the motion right now because I need big picture stuff. Because I, I'm a person that doesn't understand how to develop expense part of budget till I can know where all the revenues are coming from. And so one of the things I need to know is how much excess reserve balance is available totally? Is it the, is it this column over, well, it's changed now? Is it the 4926530 on this new sheet?
So, was there more to the question, Roger? I just wanted to make sure.
Well, no, it's just that total right now, 49, $926,530.
So let me just explain the 4926530, and hopefully you'll find an answer somewhere in that explanation. So the 4926530 is a combination of taking the beginning fund balance as expected, which is $14,853,953. It's in that yellow highlighted right in the middle column there. That number, first of all, is based upon expectations that we would have $14,853,000 left over at the end of this year that we're in right now. And there are some variables there, one of which is, you heard earlier today, Chief Gates talk about wanting to spend money on a new brush truck. When I did the expected fund balance at the end of the year, that did not include an estimate that would take that into account. I have been aware of a couple of things that have occurred, which include, we've, we're gonna have to give a refund back to some of those, to, to the two districts that want to lease water from us, because we're not gonna produce enough water to be able to give that water to them. They made a payment to us this year. We're gonna refund some of that money, or all of the money. Some of that comes from the general fund, so I've reduced the general fund balance to take that into account. I know that we're gonna have some expenditure savings in, in the current year in the general fund. I also know that we have, we got some one-time sales tax revenues and things of that nature. I feel pretty confident that the $14,853,953 will hold, but if the list that the mayor has, if, if there's action taken to spend that money this year, then that $14,853 would, would be reduced accordingly. So taking that into account, and then if you use the 400, if you use the fund balance that's in place to absorb some or all of that deficit that we're anticipating in fiscal year '22, the 453,766, that would reduce that fund balance some more. And then you take, so that would leave $14,400,187 at that point. And we have a reserve policy that says you have to have, you're supposed to have 25% of what the anticipated expenditures are, and that's the $9,473,657. So that's what leaves $4,926 after all of those calculations. So is that, do I feel really confident in the $4,926? I can't say that with.
Porches, right?
Yes. So it, I believe that you could absorb the 453,766 deficit with that. I still believe that you have some issues associated with ongoing deficits as you move forward into the next fiscal years. So what I'm saying is, as a one-time action to deal with that deficit, you could do that. I'm not recommending that you would do that on an ongoing basis. And then it's still, I, I have heard some discussion about the rest of the list, whether you would want to use some of the $4,926 for the other items that are on the list as well. Certainly you can do that, but I'm just telling you from a cautionary perspective, you have some rough waters ahead of you that you need to take into account.
So am I hearing you right? The balance that we're, we've been generating for excess reserves will come pretty much to a halt with this new budget, this proposed?
I believe that is accurate, yes.
Okay, so where we've been producing the capital contingency in some ways, that the reserve, that, that will not be there, other than what this excess reserve amount still is?
Yes.
Okay, so that's one question. Another question has to do with understanding that there is a budgetary picture that looks at different revenue sources. How does the COVID funds interface with this? Because I think those COVID funds are a resource for one-time money, for one-time projects. And I just don't know how that gets applied.
I believe your understanding as it relates to the one-time element of those additional COVID monies is very accurate, and I think it should be applied on a one-time basis, based upon what I understand about the elements that are included in that legislation that generated that additional COVID money. I think the most obvious ones that the city will qualify for are one-time type expenditures. It's about $10.7 million.
And do you have an idea how much we have left from some of the COVID monies we've received?
That's part of what I've used as my basis to generate the $14,853,000 ending fund balance. I've accounted for that in that.
Jim, in this, the expenditures are more than the revenue, and some of that is from grants and things like that. Is that $10.7 million included in that revenue?
The $10.7 million is absolutely separate, has not been accounted for at all.
Okay.
For, in this budget. I started to, when we talked, seems like a couple of years ago, but it was only four weeks ago, I started to talk about potentially using the $10.7 million. And I would expect that, based on what I know, that the 10.7 could be used very readily for water. that the $10.7 could be used very readily for water projects and for sewer projects. If we had some infrastructure that we could do, allow for broadband, for instance, it could be used for that. There are some other sort of, they're not.
It's really backbone infrastructure, it's not skeletal.
It's not. Very well put, very well put.
But what you are suggesting is we would have that discussion in the future. That would become a budget amendment to accept that money and then also to spend that money.
You don't have to use it right away.
Yeah.
You have a couple of years in which to do so. But at this point, it has not been accounted for in the budget that you have before you.
I've got several more questions. Where is the Hillview settlement money parked in this 14 million as well?
So the Hillview money, going back to the budget amendment that you did, we actually transferred, what I recommended was to transfer the money from the Hillview fund that had been set up for the settlement. So there was money that was left over, roughly $925,000. That got transferred to the general fund and then was retransferred to the Capital Projects Fund, which is in Fund 78. That money is, has not been utilized, has not been appropriated for use. It's sitting essentially as a reserve in Fund 78.
On with the dialogue here. Is the $250,000 debt service for the street department, is that now in the general fund for another use, or did it go away?
So my understanding of what your question is, so there is now a savings associated with not having to make that $250,000 debt service payment. Just to clarify, I was never any part of any discussion that said there's going to be $250,000 that would be allocated out of your property tax monies to the street fund. And consequently, for me to say that that's now part of the general fund, I can't say that necessarily directly because that's not how my math works on that. You have the amount that I've indicated on the back of this sheet of paper, And as you, that's, as it ends up, aside from the new construction amount, which got added into that total, that's the same amount as what was levied in this current year. I don't want to go too far with this, but I found another error in the calculation on the property tax levy. In the budget in the general fund, I've corrected that. Doesn't require a budget amendment, doesn't have anything to do with the 250,000. But essentially, I'm, this is the amount that you would levy. The amount that's in the general fund is not impacted at all by that $250,000 omission. Yes, I mean, I don't see how that could be, but that's my math as it relates to how that would work. I don't anticipate that unless you decided that you wanted to incorporate that as part of the street fund tax levy, then that would impact the general fund because you would take it from the general fund or some of the other funds and move it into the street fund. That may have been what your intent was a year ago when you had the discussion. I can't say.
I think it was longer than last year.
Maybe.
My sense of it was that it was parked there when the loan developed as a way of repaying that loan, and somehow it got lost.
Yes.
I mean, that's my sense, but I can't.
And I have no sense of that at all, quite frankly.
So in essence, this 453,766 is money that is in a savings account right now. We're going to apply it to our checking account for next year.
We don't have any savings accounts.
I know.
We only have checking accounts. So if I take you literally for what you're saying, I'll take it symbolically. And I think that would be an accurate depiction of that.
So, and so we're using what in some ways are one-time money to take care of ongoing expenses.
So you have a fund balance, which essentially you keep a fund balance at the level that you want to have a minimum of 25% there to deal with cash flow issues. You know, we have a period of time between the beginning of the fiscal year till the time that we get our first tax payment, which we have to have enough cash in the bank in order to allow for operations. If the cash in the bank dips too low, then you're going to have to borrow money in order to be able to meet what your cash flow operations are. So therefore, within the context of how you could interpret this, I believe, is to say you want to keep your fund balance available to deal with that cash flow financing issue that you're going to have versus having to go outside to borrow the money. You would not necessarily, I wouldn't want to use it for either one-time or ongoing. I would just say you don't want to deplete it below where it needs to be in order to deal with your cash flow operations.
So.
That's not a real good answer, but.
I remember your comments. So the one-time money that might be in here would be then in the 78th Fund, Capital Improvement Fund. Because that's not going to be, will that be added to in this budget? I don't think so.
So in what, one of the recommendations I've made is that you take a million dollars that had been allocated for property taxes to that fund in the current year and not allocate it. So that million dollars was, the recommendation was to move that to the general fund. So if you hadn't done that, we'd be another million dollars out of balance right now.
Exactly.
And that also takes into account all the other revenue sources we have and the shortfall we have, for example, in investments.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
That's an offset, income in is revenue, and now it's being applied to help counter that occurrence.
So an answer, direct answer to your question, Fund 78 has no revenue coming in. There will be nothing added to it.
What we see is what we get for.
That's correct.
For next year.
I would also say that if there's any money left over at the end of this fiscal year, you leave it in the general fund balance. Don't transfer it to Fund 78.
Okay. I'm working my way through. I looked at the TIF district, and I think you gave a report to the TIF district, I'm not sure.
Yesterday, yes.
And when I looked at the TIF district, the Urban Renewal TIF says that in 2022, there ought to be $466,664 that comes in to repay loans. And we're supposed to be first in line. But I don't know how that's performing. I don't think we're even, I don't even think we're 2% of that. We may be.
I don't have a good sense of that either, quite frankly. I don't know how the TIF district is performing in comparison to maybe what the expectation was or what the strategic view might have been. And I think you're referring to the, not the whole Urban Renewal Agency, but just one district in particular.
Yeah, just that the Northgate, that's where the monies all came from.
And I don't have, I haven't seen anything that would change my view, which is I really don't know at this point.
Okay, so we really can't count on any revenue right now, so there's miniscule. But if you had hundreds of thousands, it's going to be thousands, probably we can anticipate.
Could be.
Could be.
Yeah.
And one of my comments now is going to be the inflation factor. And I'm going to pass this out, and I'm sorry that people here don't have this. Because I, we've. I'm not sure I've got one for you, Jim.
Oh, I've got it all memorized. Just tell me where it's from and I.
No, no, no. It's just one idea. So the thing I did is I just went through, I divided Pocket Bell up into nine sections. And I just went through and pretty randomly picked out on the assessor's parcel viewer different properties to look at and see what we've done in terms of property taxes. On this list, and it's kind of indicated, there's one thing I didn't, I can't catch the air till this morning. Section nine is south of Terry and east of the freeway. Okay, it's not east of Terry because there's no east on Terry, really. If you go east on Terry, you're just going to find more streets.
I'm sorry, but I wouldn't know the difference, but that's, yeah.
So anyway, I looked at this, and there's, it just shows that we're all over the board. And I mean, you know, we go from, and I know there's probably anomalies, but here, and I can probably decipher a couple of them. There's one tax increase of 135.92%. Another is the tax increase of 132.04. My gut tells me that might have been somebody was on a circuit breaker, and somehow that house returned to the market, and perhaps it was purchased and rented. So it would go from a low income-producing tax revenue to a high-producing tax-only explanation. I can just throw out there. I don't know that, that's an assumption. But when I looked at this, I also ran, and on the back page is what inflation would be. On the back page, it shows what, if you pay $500 in taxes, 2017, that'd be your 2016 December payment, your 2017 June payment. If you pay $500 on January 1st the next year, inflation would have said you should be paying 531,16 on $500. And this just shows you kind of by category that way, what could be anticipated as inflation-adjusted tax. I went to the internet and looked up our, in addition, our county assessor's page. They have several videos on that page that illustrate what is happening in Idaho with regard to taxes. And they are sponsored by AIC. I know a lot of people want to really drill down on AIC. Two of the tapes that I found very informative were, one, "Growth Out of Pay for Growth", and another one was about how taxes are going up. In that thing, it shows the tax shift that dramatically, on the one, "Growth Out of Pay for Growth", there's illustration, 2019, I won't remember the exact number. But if a city took its 3% or a taxing district, I'm going to say a city because that's who we are, it didn't amount to a 3% increase on the residential taxpayers in Idaho. It amounted to, I think it was 10.74% increase on residential taxpayers in Idaho. Statewide, that's what they have, it's part of that. I think it's a dysfunctional system. And the only way I know how to deal with dysfunction is not to participate in it. And therefore, I can't really continue to beat people up who are residential taxpayers because the state, in its omnipotence, has broken the system that we have to utilize. I think it's incumbent on us to be the people who step up and say, craziness has to stop, and it has to stop with us. And unfortunately, it's a hard thing to do right now. But I just can't see going back to people. Ironically, if you look at that list I put out, in 2021, where you wouldn't have expected anybody's taxes to go up, it was either nine or 11 of the residential property owners had taxes go up even though they got the COVID relief, which is amazing to me that we got such a good relief, and yet there are several properties who had their taxes go up. And so I don't have a solution. I just know that we have a big problem that I've got to respond to. And the problem has three dimensions. One, it has our dimension of what we're paying our employees, and we've got to be forthright there. The second is what we are able to afford in terms of everything beyond our employees and services and machinery and all that stuff that makes them better workers. But the third component's always got to be the taxpayer. And the taxpayers have to be at this table with us, and we have to understand that we just can't keep going to that well because we can give water to the other tube, but we're making the other people go into dehydration. And somewhere, there's got to be a balance. And I'm going to be one that tries to find a better road to balance than what I think we've done. And I needed to say that, I've got it illustrated here, because I just can't go back to taxpayers and say we need more and more. And that's part of what my logic will be as we go forward in some of our discussions. I'm big on doing things that produce revenue and help us generate a revenue stream that can pay for themselves over time. Other things I know are essential, and we've got to do them. But when I look at this, I'm even really reluctant to go to 453,000 because I know it balances a budget, but we're balancing a budget based on procrastination. I'm not going to use kick to kick. We're using it up based on procrastination because we're procrastinating making the decisions that we need to make. And we may not need to make them this year, but we've got to be knowing that coming down the pipe, I agree with you, we're in a bad situation, and we've got to get on top of it before it gets on top of us. That's all I guess.
Okay, Rick?
I just want to know if ready is included in the general fund balance?
Ready is included as an expenditure. When we went through their budget, through the budgets of the nonprofits as well as that item, I did not hear anything that would indicate to reduce that balance, so that's still included.
How much is allocated?
I think it's 35,000.
I was going to say, last year's was 35,000.
I'd love to see that go away.
Agreed. I agree too.
Okay, well, that's, that could be part of helping that 453. There's no question. And so, but I think that would be a discussion for.
Other questions? Did you use the AIC projections on the various state allocation of funding in the next year for revenues?
I did. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Chris?
Yeah. First, a couple of specific questions, and then an expression of extreme discomfort. So first of all, how did you try to include the fire CVA, which we don't know what they're, you know, what that's going to be? So.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know what that's going to cost us in employee costs because it's not settled as far as I know. And so how did you try to include that? Originally, I think it was included at the same rate as police, but it's not necessarily clear that that is going to be what jails out.
So the answer to the question I'm going to give to you is that we are still in negotiations with that bargaining unit. Because at this juncture, I still represent the management of the city. I'm not going to give away the number that is included, but I have got some money that is included in the budget so that the, I don't, at this juncture, based upon what the city council has approved, I don't anticipate that there would be any, that the amount that we show as a deficit would increase.
Okay. And then I believe, so I'm asking just to make sure that what I think I heard is clear. I believe I heard you say that we can balance. I believe I heard you say that we can balance this budget, which is clear. However, in terms of this particular budget in its current variation, helping to move us toward a sustainable budget, this doesn't help us. This basically puts it off and gives us a year to try to figure out how we move forward.
Moves it beyond the point where I will be able to help you resolve that.
Right, right. But I'm clear in my understanding that, I mean, I can clearly see that we can balance this budget. That's not rocket science. But beyond this point, we are going to have some problems. I think you said rough, I can't remember.
Rough waters.
Rough waters. I was thinking rocky seas and rocky bro. No, okay. So I just want to get that.
Not tidal waves, but rough waters.
Rough water, okay. And then, is by any stretch of the imagination, based on what you know, which is always hard with money from the federal government, do you have any idea, or Mayor, you may have an idea, whether or not accounting software could be included, if broadband can be included as infrastructure? Now, I realize that involves, I think it still involves wire some sort. So that's a little bit different than software perhaps, but by any stretch of the imagination, could accounting software qualify for the 10.7 million COVID and not have us have to be paying it back?
I can give you my.
I won't say it publicly, just in case the people from the COVID watchers are out there listening to what I'm saying. I suppose there might be a way, but I just believe that's probably not going to work.
And my opinion would be absolutely not. They're not going to fund programs with that. My thought.
At one point, when we were listening to the non-part mentals, the nonprofit organizations, we made the statement that if we're going to ask our departments to come in at a 2.5% reduction, that we needed to do the same for the nonprofits. And we did that, I believe, in this budget for the nonprofits. However, as we went through the departmental presentations, I believe that most departments came in flat, some came in with an increase. I did not see what I believe we were basically, what we said we were going to do, which is a 2.5% reduction for departments. And so, I'm assuming that the numbers here do not represent a 2.5% reduction.
That's correct.
Okay.
Other than the nonprofits.
Right, right. So I'm uncomfortable with that because we said to the nonprofits, hey, well, I believe it was you, Heidi, said if we're going to ask our departments to do that, then I think it's fair to ask our nonprofits to do that. And we didn't kind of, and this is not that you didn't follow through, but as council, we didn't follow through with that. And so, I'm uncomfortable having made that statement to one group of entities and then not having followed through. On a larger basis, kind of along the lines of what Roger is saying, I cannot participate in another budget where the real sacrifices, and I might go as far as to say the only sacrifices, are being paid by the public. Either through property taxes right now, or through potential dangerous situations like fuel depot tanks that could become an EPA cleanup site in the relatively near future, like not having an aquatic center that includes an amenity. By not having equipment that we might need in order to provide high level services, I cannot participate in another budget that does not take the people of this town into account and constantly, constantly makes only them pay one way or the other. And I have grave concerns when I look at the budget calendar because here we are on July 8th, tentative FY22 budget presented to city council for approval and publication. Then nearly a month from now, and I understand the public hearings and all of that, we have the public hearing. And then on the 12th, we have one study session to consider comments from the public hearing. Presumably, we could also have other budget conversations at that meeting. And then on Thursday, the 19th, is the only meeting that we have to resolve this. And I do not believe that we have allowed enough time to safely be able to do the considerations that we need to do. I would like to add a few critical items from the list we received from the departments and get rid of this 453766 deficit by looking at what we can cut within this budget. I'm not willing to use other funds because that is not going to get us where we need to be. We have got to learn how to begin to tighten our belts. So I am very uncomfortable with even moving forward tentatively unless I have printed assurances that we will include enough time in our budget calendar. Last year, I felt as though I had my back against the wall with a finger in my chest saying, okay, you know, we had errors, we had millions of dollars of confusion, but we're out of time. And I will not end up there again.
Okay, Heidi?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to call for a vote on the motion that's on the floor. I think that, Jim, you have done an excellent job putting this budget together. And Mayor and Jim, I appreciate all of your efforts. I think Linda's motion is good. The points that have been raised about concerns about taxes and the taxpayers, that's exactly why Linda said, let's publish with a 3% to protect ourselves, but going in with the understanding that we're going to instruct the mayor, figure out how we're going to get rid of this 453. Now, Rick is the only one I've heard actually give a tangible example of something that can be cut out of there, which is ready. So I think if you've got lists, please forward them to the mayor and to the finance department. And I think they will totally look at those and do that. So I think we should go ahead and to move things along.
No, I haven't had a chance to. Sorry, I haven't had a chance to ask my questions.
Sure.
Okay. So on May 27th, Mr. Kruger, you presented to us and you said that we would have to cut a million dollars from the budget. So this doesn't include that, right?
We've done some things that have allowed for us to come to the point that we're at. I can't tell you specifically how we got there. If that's what your question is, I can recount that.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to, okay, so the 453766 doesn't take into account the million dollars that we're not putting into our capital fund savings account, is how I think of it. And so, does it also not include the million dollars that we started out having to cut at the very beginning?
That's correct.
So now, we're actually looking at $2,453,766 technically. Yes?
Well, bottom line is, you have a $453,000 deficit. I don't think you need to go beyond that and add some more as a cut. I think you're going to, if you, that issue needs to be dealt with at this juncture.
But if we were going to fund 78.
There would be another million dollars.
And if you're only, then this deficit number would be 1,453,766.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and then I have a question for Heather. The couple, after we got this paper on the 29th, I sent an email to you, and I know you're busy, so I'm not scolding or anything, but I sent you an email asking you for compensation for employees. When can I, when will I have that?
So actually, multiple members of council asked for that. So because more than one of you asked, I need to give it in public meeting. I do have that today. I'll pay if you would like that now.
Thank you. And then, I am, I am not comfortable in the least, thank you, with balancing this budget this year and then dealing with everything somewhere down the road. That's completely, that's just irresponsible. That's irresponsible. So it's as painful as it is because the majority of our, but last year, I wanted a 5% reduction in the budget. You asked departments to come in with 5% of their operating budget, which is miniscule by comparison. The majority of our budget is wages and benefits. That's the majority of our budget. And unfortunately, with this financial situation, we have to make decisions on reducing that percentage of our budget. It's wages and benefits. I know nobody wants to tell somebody that they're not going to have a job, but it is not sustainable. It is not sustainable. And, and, and I get that, especially in an election year, nobody wants to do that. But the truth is, is we're just going to continue bloating and we're going to get to a situation where we are going to have to do a lot more than just cut a few positions. And I do have tangible suggestions on how to do that. So, but I think that's a conversation that needs to be had. I'm not going to vote to publish anything right now until we have a real conversation about how to fix this budget the right way. The right way, not just moving money around and then sticking our head in the sand and pretending everything's grand. We have no financial issues at the city. Everything's great. We're in a fabulous financial situation, right, Linda?
Okay, Heidi? Go ahead.
If you have tangible ideas of where it could be cut, I would love to hear them. I'm surprised to learn that they still haven't brought up when we had how many budget meetings and nobody has brought them up yet. So it's apparent to me, I've been on the council five years, Councilmember Bray has not voted for the budget in any one of those years. And when you were elected, you vowed to be a coalition with Councilmember Bray. So it's pretty apparent that you're not going to be happy one way or the other.
No, you didn't, no.
So I think we need to go ahead and vote because that will just help us move forward. And we've had a finance department that's done an excellent job and I think we should go ahead and vote on the motion.
Okay, all right. We're not going to argue back and forth here, so that's what we'll do is just vote. We have a motion by Lyric and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the room? And I might just remind everybody, the motion is to publish these numbers, including the 939 with the intent not to use any of that and to not use any of the 3%. But we want the protection so that we can, if we have to do something between now and in a month, that ability is there.
I have a procedural question. When we publish, we're publishing more than just our, what our ask is, we're going to have categories, aren't we? I mean, we don't just publish five line items and say, that's our budget.
So what we would publish would be essentially the same list that you see here, which would be by fund and it would show the revenues and the expenditures. And we also need to indicate essentially how much our property tax levy request is.
But we don't have expenses defined, really.
Well, so it would be similarly to how it's listed here, expenses by fund and total. And that's how it's been done in the past as well. You have a total amount for the general fund expenditures, total amount for the general fund revenues. That has been the way it's been done and I've seen it done that way in other jurisdictions, primarily the one that I work for in Garden City.
I just wanted to know what we were doing here.
Okay.
So how did we get to the August meeting and the public knows what to come and talk about when we just have such general ramifications? A few years ago, and I'm taking you completely out of it, there was a proposal for branding and there was an outcry from the citizens and that got removed. Okay? It was a branding project for the city. There was also initially a much more lucrative proposal for council pay and mayor, and that got reduced. But somewhere, there's got to be, the public has to know what the various proposals are before they know where to land, you know, because they, how do they weigh in? And, you know, the other side, I don't think we even had discussion about the list that could be added to this. And I think budget formation should be about the detail, not the generalities.
So, I don't know if I can even speak to that. We've always, in publication, has always been basically what you're looking at right here. The outcry of citizens and stuff like that, for example, the branding thing was generated here, that this was out there. And the public came in and expressed their concern. And so, it was, I don't remember if it was removed from the budget or if it was just not spent.
It was removed as part of this process.
Okay.
It was removed because public outcry got note of our budget and what aren't, the intentions were in the budget. And they raised their voice and it got removed before we got to our August 5th meeting.
So I think that the same applies today, is this is what will be out there. If there's something that the public is worried about or upset about here, then they have the ability after the publication to say, wait a minute, what are you doing here with the council? And then we have August 5th where they'll come and express their concern. And August 12th is where we'll be able to remove everything, I anticipate immediately, right now, already anticipate removing the 939327 because that's, it's been very clear that it is not a desire to take any of that 3%. And so, I think that that is generated from the meetings that we've had in the past, from budget meetings and different things. And when this comes out in publication, it's got to be next week, he's got to have it to the newspaper. And then the week after that is when it will be out in publication. But we have some citizens here today that will be looking at it, that have been in the middle of it and that will obviously have some questions as well. So I think that, I think that process is there and I think we have the ability to continue to do that.
So then on the 12th is when we're going to have the discussion about reducing staff and everything else?
Yeah.
When are we going to have a discussion about what to cut?
Okay, the 12th is when you would have to make the decision on, are we, we're pulling X amount of employees out, we're laying people off.
Okay.
That would be on the 12th, yes.
Because I agree with you in what you said to the paper and I know that HR is in agreement. So we have to have that conversation.
So with that, we have a motion on the floor. Connie, will you please call the room?
Larry?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
The reason I vote against these budgets is because we procrastinate doing the things we're charged to do. And so, I'm going to vote no because I do not believe in procrastination. I believe in being proactive and making decisions and not having lists that just show up and we. and we put in. I like the process and I've said many times, the majority of the budget, I have been for. But it had things in it that I could not vote for. There's a difference in being 90% for what's going on, but can't push yourself to vote for other things. And there's a big difference in just saying no and saying, I am saying no for these reasons. So I'm saying no because we have not done the business of this council.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Or Tatum?
No. It's irresponsible.
I'm going to take issue with the fact that when we ran, we agreed to have Roger be our chief. And however he evolves.
No, I didn't say that. I just said you were a coalition.
Well, I could say the same thing.
Well, I've never said I was a coalition.
Well, look, man, just make my comment.
So just, yeah, finish your comment.
I'm going to take issue. I am nobody's puppet. I make my own decisions. I always have. The fact that I agree that the people of this town have gotten short shift through the budget process last year and this year, based on my personal experience, that I know. And therefore, here we are once again. And I vote no because we have not done our work.
Vlad?
Okay, so I will just say, I think we have done a good job, yeoman's work quite frankly, in putting where we are. What we're talking about is a publication number. We're not talking about the end number. I disagree that the council has put everything off and not done our responsibility. I think the council's done a great job doing their responsibility. So with that, I am going to vote yes, that we move forward to publish this. That being said, does not, in my mind, stop right now this discussion. Unless the council's desire is for these items and any of the reserve dollars, which would at the end of the day add to this number. If you're interested in that, we need to have that discussion today. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the first three priority items on this list, which would be the fuel site, the phase two pool resurfacing, and the maintenance budget for city hall. Because I do believe that we have a responsibility to the population to maintain the assets that we have. And so I would like to see us do those first three on the list. And we can take the recommendation of finance staff as to where to take that from, whether it's from the excess reserves or, you know, specifically like the fuel site would have been out of streets, I think, because we had it budgeted our previous year and then it's rolled over. So taking that out of like the street fund, I guess. I'm not sure exactly how to allocate that, but I would like to get those first three done out of reserves, whether that's within the department or out of the general fund excess reserves.
Second.
Okay.
So, so just to be clear, you didn't vote for the fire truck, but you do want to spend $12 million?
No, I was going to say $12 million.
2.1, 2.1 million, $1.2 million, okay. I just want to be clear.
So, so, and as I, and I want to also be clear.
Because the fire truck is coming potentially and we're already discussing that.
So that, but, but so related to this, these three items here, would you like a report? I don't even know if we can send an email to the council recommending where we would remove the, or where we would pay for these or just wait until the.
It could be a proposed agenda. We're going to make decisions on that. We don't, it's the same as getting other stuff.
Right, but if it's, if it's looking for council, sharing information with council and exchanging information.
So we would, I guess I need to work with you on finding out when we can get with this so that they, they know where we would be pulling this if this, if this motion passes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we do.
Yes.
I'd like to talk about that fuel site. Is there, with Tom, is there a projection that that fuel site will be available, that the tanks will be available within the next fiscal year?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. I believe in '22, we're seeing, to Councilman Bray's point, we are starting to see prices kind of leveling out. I think the biggest thing, the, the fuel suppliers for the tanks are kind of sticking with the 18-month thing. But I kind of got the impression if we were to put money down, they may act a little quicker. So I, we can't get it done in '21, but I believe we could probably by mid to late summer of '22, we could get it.
It would be a complete project by then?
Yes.
The other question is, I have a problem using reserve funds for that maintenance budget. That's one-time money for an ongoing expenditure and I'm, I'm struggling with that particular item.
I can appreciate it.
You know, when I looked at that, I've had some discussions on the building maintenance. Because if it's $300,000 now, what's it going to be in 10 years? Because that's just maintenance, that's not. And, and we have antiquated systems here that can't even get parts for them now. I asked what it would take to change it out, the HVAC system, for example, and they said it'd be probably $2 million because it's going to be all re-engineered and reinstalled because it doesn't meet standards. So I looked at what a new city hall might cost and I just, these are way off the chart, my own numbers, but I know it was $8 million a few years ago, so I said $12 million and we put down $2 million of it. And I just ran a simple mortgage calculator on $10 million at very low interest rates. Still is coming out $500,000 a year. But that $500,000 a year or more, because we might be limited to how long our bond can be. I don't know all those nuanced things. But, but $500,000 a year for a new facility versus $300,000 a year for one that's still degrading, to me, you ought to pay the $500,000. You know, I mean, that's just a reality. But I don't think that's our decision. I think it's like the animal shelter, that we need to send that as a bond issue before the voters and we need to make our case and the voters need to decide if they will absorb that bond. That, that's kind of where I've come from. So the $300,000 could be in there tentatively, but maybe we should make this an issue that comes up on the election. I don't know if we can get it in as a bond issue by then or not.
I think you could do it for May, May election or whatever, probably, but not for the November. I, I just saw a attorney going, no, I don't think we could get it.
It's quite a process to do a general division bond like that and I think we'll, we'll pass the time limit for this November.
Okay. So.
And there are issues associated with going to the ratings agency, doing all of those types of things, getting an underwriter. It becomes logistically pretty much impossible for this year.
And I, and I think.
But I still think it needs to be something we take to the taxpayer.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Chubbick just spent, what, 15 on their city hall?
$925,000 a year for 30 years.
So, so that's.
Without going to the taxpayer.
Just a number, I mean, I'm just throwing, we're grabbing numbers.
We could do this like we do cars for the, for the cars department. We could put some other entities in here.
That's, that's what.
And I don't know, maybe we need to take, I don't know how we would tear this down and rebuild here. So it's going to be some property, there's a big picture out there. But I, I just can't see where we are with what we've been told in terms of that.
It'd be a very long process to, to put a plan together, architectural renderings, figure out where it's going to go, how we're going to, yeah, that would be a process.
Takes some time, but it wouldn't hurt to start that process and start getting in front of the voters for it. Okay, so we have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Lyric.
Could I ask a point of clarification? So if I'm not mistaken, I thought I heard a motion to publish the budget as indicated. Is this in addition, that you would like to see the items published? Or is this separate from that publication and you're looking for something separately?
Yeah, I don't really know how the best way is from a finance standpoint to get those included out of reserves or wherever. If that would go into the budget or.
I think you would have to add this to the expenditures of the budget.
And with that in mind, because of the logistics, and I'll just say this, of when the publication needs to take place, it's not going to be something where the finance department can decide, well, we're going to fund it here or fund it there. So there would need to be some specificity related to that.
So I think what, at least as I'm planning in my head here, is we would add this dollar amount to the expenditures, not to the revenues, unless you and I will have to have a discussion probably Monday at some point about the $300,000.
Because I, I certainly don't want to make a decision as it relates to which fund, but it needs, that decision needs to be made. Unless you say you're giving me the authority to do that and, and then I can do that. But I would need to do it in conjunction with you. And I'm just anticipating how this is going to work. I'm not in a position to be able to make a decision to increase the deficit, for instance, in the general fund.
So the motion itself was to have the mayor and Jim figure out where that's coming from? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, like that, that was just my suggestion on the fuel site. Is that, does that sit within where it was previously budgeted within streets?
So my preference would be is if you're going to add those three items, and I don't have that list in front of me, so I can't say what comprises the list. Thank you. So we have a new citywide fuel site, which, again, my preference would be if, essentially it says Department Fuel Fund. The fuel fund does not have sufficient resources to allow for funding an $800,000 new fuel site. The street fund could, and that would, or the general fund. My interest would be is to help me be able to resolve this logistically as quickly as possible. And aside from the fact whether it's going to pass or not, I think there probably needs to be some element of specificity as it relates to that.
Sanitation has that.
I was going to say, could we split it?
So.
And I would not necessarily, I would have a little bit of a hard time funding that or financing that through sanitation at this point in time necessarily. But I'm just telling you, that would be one of my issues associated with that. The phase two pool resurfacing, Capital Projects Fund, Fund 78 is probably the, or the general fund. The $300,000 for maintenance budget if no new city hall. I don't know enough about that to know what the anticipated element of where that's going to come from. I'm assuming it would come out of the city hall budget. So that would add to the deficit.
So I think that we can, I, well, and maybe an attorney needs to weigh in on this. I think that we can probably do this with the motion that is out there and then explain to the council where that is because we're not making that decision. The council would then be making the decision whether or not they agree that we remove it from one area or another as we move forward. So I think.
And if we're talking about adding it to the total budget, the reason I would want some specificity there is because the public does have a right to know which funds those are going to come from as a discussion point. That doesn't mean that the council's going to approve those, but at least to know which funding would be used.
I think phase two pool could be out of the general fund excess reserves rather than out of 78 capital.
Okay. Chris, I started writing.
Thank you, I'm just going to try to get it because my water bottle spilled on my.
Oh, we've got, I've got another one for you, Chris.
So Mayor, in answer to your question and based on your concerns.
Back there.
I would suggest the motion be amended with the recommended source for those three priority items, subject to development within the budget and then subject to final approval of the council. So that it does have a, so there is a discussion point for people to understand how that was developed.
So, so with that in mind, before any amendments are made, the fuel site is the big dollar number there and stuff like that. Is there any reason why sanitation could not pay half of it out of their fund?
I think probably the accounting concern there is that sanitation is an enterprise fund. It's not developed, as far as I know, and I could be wrong in this, in their V study or their RAY study, which would create problems with that RAY study being something we could rely on.
What about the sanitation reserves?
Again, those reserves are part of that RAY study. Those are, those are developed as a, as a portion of that whole broad picture.
Okay.
The simpler route would be to just have it come out of the street fund, if that's what the desire is. And then it gets paid back from the different sources that would be paying for the fuel over the course of time.
So we could look at the street fund. That sounds like would be the simpler route.
So where, where would be the most appropriate for the city hall maintenance then? So I can.
I would take that out of general fund because personally, that's what, where my mind goes.
Okay, so then can I amend my motion to indicate that fuel site would come out of streets and that phase two pool and the city hall maintenance would come out of general fund?
Are you good with that amendment?
Yes.
General fund reserve or general?
Yeah. But in ex, the reserve funds in excess of the reserves that are.
Yeah. I'm still, we're using one time in my mind. I know it's different.
No, I totally appreciate that. I just don't know where else. I don't feel like we should not do it.
I think you got to be upfront and say, we're either going to tax work or not. Because, because it's something that you're going to have ongoing. You're going to tax work now or you're going to tax work later, but you can't keep going to your reserve every year for $300,000. And I think when you put that in the budget, and I understand why you're saying we're making a $300,000 annual campaign until we get something else.
And I would just add this too. You really can't budget for years into the future. You can do one year at a time. And so if the desire is to take $300,000 annually, then that discussion needs to take place each year in the future. Aside from the fact that you're going to have that discussion undoubtedly as it relates to this $300,000 that we're talking about here. But I would anticipate that that would end up as a line item in the city hall budget as an expenditure. And it, based on the fact that it would add to the deficits of 453,000, it'll add $300,000 to that deficit. By virtue of the fact that unless it comes from taxes, it's going to come out of the fund balance.
What's, what's being paid for on that $300,000? I still have the $200,000 for the improvements at the finance office.
Come on over here.
I'm just wondering if we're serious about a new city hall, do we need to, do we need to make that improvement immediately?
Richard Bigelow, Phyllis Facility Maintenance Director and Building Official for the city. The fund is that currently we only have $87,000 budgeted in the city hall budget for maintenance, contracts for the HVAC system, which we're running out of space, which is going to jump from $5,000 to $11,000. Yesterday, we just lost a compressor in the police department for the AC unit. Yesterday, we just lost a compressor in the police department for the AC unit, and luckily we have a compressor on hand, but that's still going to cost $10,000 to replace, and that's an adequate system. We won't be able to get any new parts for that. So, this $300,000, at least my vision of it is to help replace carpets, office remodels, and then hopefully whatever we don't spend goes into reserve for something catastrophic if we don't get a new city hall. In order to replace our HVAC system, because we can't get parts in the old freon that's no longer being used, you know, we have to go and hire a mechanical engineer to come and design the system. We're going to have to drop all the ceiling tiles, lights. We're going to have to move employees, and, you know, they're going to have to come in with scissor lifts and rebuild this. And while we're at it, since we're already gone that far, we should update the lighting, and then our sprinkler heads are at the end of their life cycle. So, it's just like during my budget presentation, we've deferred maintenance since we moved into this building, and sooner or later, it's going to come. Now, this compressor that we're going to fix could last two months. It could last two years. It can last 15 years. I don't know. But I just, as the director of the building, I just have a hard time only having $87,000. And correct me, I talked to Jim yesterday, $160,000 roughly thousand in building reserves in case something goes catastrophically wrong. You know, we just...
He's referring to the... we have an emergency replacement fund, which is outside of the general fund.
Yeah. So, it just... we don't have the funds in case something goes wrong in a... I mean, we've been in here almost 25 years, and then I don't know how long this building was built. So, I mean, this building is at the end of its life cycle without dumping some serious money into it. So, that's what the $300,000 was for, and just trying to help build a fund in case we don't get a new city hall. So...
Okay.
I really like the idea of a new city hall, but I also agree that that's... if we go that route, I mean, I think it should go to bond. I think that's going to be a years-long process, so it's not going to happen anytime soon. And so, to me, you know, we can't not do anything in the meantime. As long as we're in this building for several more years, we have to maintain it. It's an asset, as you said, and that, to me, is kicking the can down the road. If we're not taking care of our assets to where they become worth nothing, that's irresponsible. So, I think we cannot not do this.
I just don't want council coming back when we say, hey, we have a dilemma, you know, we blew up. Because for the city hall side, once you cross through the double wooden doors, there's only four light switches that turns on all the lighting. And we put some... a couple of new outlets in an office, and that panel, that circuit's maxed out, and we've already had issues with fluctuations, flickering of the lights. So, and we just don't want you coming back saying, well, why didn't we do anything? Why didn't you do anything about it? Because it does. It just costs a lot of money. And like I said, the building's old.
And I think the longer we put it off, the more it costs. It doesn't get less. It just gets more and more.
So, while we're having this discussion, do we need to put in next year's budget the possibility of $48,000 for a special election for bond, or is that too soon?
How does that work?
If we had an air runoff, it'd be $48,000, is what I'm just saying.
I think the bonds have to be done during a primary or general election. We can't do it. But I'd have to look into that. I don't have that option.
But is that expense the county's expense, or is that an expense to the city?
It's ours.
Because it's our bond.
If it's a relationship only for our bond, then it would be on our...
It's possible, but I don't know all of the details. That might be considered part of the initial costs associated to do the bond issue. I'm not necessarily suggesting that you do this on a lot of items, but you could incorporate that as part of the bonding cost.
No, that's... yeah, I believe that's...
And then that could be financed, if that's the way it goes.
I think that the discussion is we have a discussion as we move forward, and we need to come up with some money. If that's the case, then we would...
I also think we need to allow enough time to do a public education campaign, bonds.
And it probably is too early by next year.
Right. I think we need to allow that time, because they're rarely successful if you don't actually get buy-in and...
And how much would it cost for an architect to design a new city hall?
Good question. So, some things that we'll have to talk about. Thank you. Okay. So, we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lyric. And in that motion, recommendations of taking the $800,000 from the streets, excess reserves, the $153,000 Phase Two Pool resurfacing from the general fund excess reserves, and the $300,000 maintenance from the excess reserves of the general fund. Is that... that's correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Point of clarification. So, we are actually now changing what we will publish?
So, what we'll do is add to the expenditures, yes. We will not be changing anything on the taxing side. It would be the expenditures, and it would be using the excess reserves to pay for those.
Right. I just wanted to be sure that we're actually changing what we're going to publish.
Yeah.
Okay.
With that, then, Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Tino?
Yes.
Portagen? Stevens?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So, with that, I think we've got some direction to be able to put the publication together, and I think there's still quite a bit of work for the council to be prepared for the meeting on the 12th. So, with that, thank you very much. And I'll get you a list.
Yeah. So, I'm just curious, because a number of my questions are what-if questions. You know, what would it look like if? How much would it cost if? Because I can't answer those. All I can do is ask the question. And so, it appears to me that a number of my questions would need consideration from staff, potentially research from staff. And I'm concerned that we have only the 12th, which presumably, depending on what we hear from the public, could be eaten up by considerations from the public, which leaves us with only the 19th to resolve things. And I'm thinking that none of us want to be here from 9:00 AM until 9:00 AM the next morning. And I...
You don't give a...
I won't be here. I can tell you that.
So, I'm just concerned, as I've previously stated, that I think we have some pretty darn serious work to do, or at least discussion, regardless of, you know, of the fact that frequently there are the votes to put things through regardless of the discussion, and I get that. But I... I'm concerned that we have not allowed enough time, and I cannot tell you how adverse I am to being back where I was last year, where literally it was like, okay, fine, whatever, but we're at the deadline, so you have to make a choice, because guess what? We have to pass this budget. And I'm so adverse to being finding myself in that situation again.
Okay. So, with your questions, if you send those to Jim, and he can maybe disperse them, and we can get some answers for those, so that you'll be more prepared on that.
So, perhaps I could be clearer and suggest that we need some more time in the calendar, because just like publishing highs so we can go low, I would like to apply that same principle to our calendar. Publish high and hope that we can go low.
So, council, what is your desire for extra meetings?
I hope they...
We can look at a day or two between the 5th after the public comment and the 12th.
I'm just a little confused, because I've heard you say in previous meetings, if you have ideas of where to cut or questions, please email them. And I guess I just don't understand why they haven't been emailed to Jim previously, because he could have had answers to give to all of us at this meeting.
Well, I think, Heidi, from my perspective, until I had the previous version of this, which allowed me to really get the more complete picture, that the questions were more random. And because I didn't know exactly, you know, what the deficit was going to look like, you know, what we had in excess, I mean, I just didn't know a lot of the numbers. And so, I mean, I had all kinds of random questions, but they did not necessarily pertain to this specifically, or I could not necessarily see their relationship to this because I didn't have this. And so, once we got the previous version of this, it took me some time to go through it carefully, make sure that I was understanding where numbers were coming from and where they were showing up, et cetera, et cetera. And so, that, for me, is the explanation.
Well, why don't we... it's not a bad idea to have more than one meeting to look at that. Why don't we just plan another meeting between the 5th and the 12th to go over some of these items? And that way, it gives everybody the opportunity to have questions answered and go from there. It will be interesting without a CFO, but we'll have department heads here that can answer a number of questions. And the 12th is an important date, so we can get the ordinance prepared. It gives you time to prepare the ordinance.
The ordinance is very similar to the publication, in that it just shows the revenues and the expenditures. And so, anything that affects that will affect the ordinance as long as it goes down and up.
Yeah.
Can't be done without CFO. Much more effective with a CFO. So, maybe, you know, we have time today if there's specific questions. It's up to you, Mayor. You get to run the meeting, but we also have time the rest of the month, too, or wait till after public hearing. But those are the things that we have to know after the 12th.
There's nothing that precludes us from meeting before then to actually be trimming down the budget, sir?
Before then?
Before the public hearing?
Before the 5th?
Because we're actually just... we're staying within the parameters by increasing it. So, we could be paring it down before the...
Not theoretically, no. I mean, today's point is to have something that can be prepared for publication. That's the driving force today. Ultimately, the 12th is the last deadline for preparation of the actual ordinance.
Okay. So, we'll... we can look at dates... I can look at some dates and see what we can do to have a couple other meetings, at least another meeting to be able to answer some of those questions.
So, Jared and I probably need to talk, but I would say, to the point of Roger's question, is there any reason why we couldn't have essentially deliberations on the budget before the public hearing? I would tend to think you probably can't have deliberations. So, then, is a frank and more casual discussion tantamount to deliberations? And have you given the public an opportunity? If you're going to reduce budgets, essentially, they need to know where you're going to reduce it. So, is there sufficient notification to the public to allow for them to be able to enter into that discussion? I don't know. But Jared and I probably need to talk about that a little bit.
That's a great point. That really is. Because, yeah, you might not be having action items at those points, but then what's the point of the meeting, right? And so, yeah, if you start affecting the numbers after publication but before the public hearing without the ability to publish again, well, no.
So, I mean, this meeting was noticed. You've got the opportunity, if you want to make some comments as it relates to that, to start steering in the right direction. That would probably work. Give everybody the opportunity to be here, and they can hear what you're saying. But I don't know if you're prepared to do that today or not.
One of the things that I think we're going to have to put on the table, based on what I've heard from the mayor about layoffs and sustainability and everything, we're going to have to put on, at a minimum, an attrition policy, so that we're not immediately replacing, we're generating some funds out of it. So... because if it's not sustainable next year, if we can use attrition to get to certain points that are more sustainable next year, I think that's the management we need to be doing.
So, it sounds to me like, and maybe it will change, that a meeting needs to happen between the 5th and the 12th, along with the 12th, so that we can have the discussion, consider all things, and then go from there, is what it sounds to me like.
A short question, and it goes to sustainability and to not this budget, but next year's. Heather, can you... if my understanding is correct, we, through your finesse, we are in the third year of a three-year healthcare cycle with our provider, and that's a great benefit to us. Is this year three of a three-year...
So, we have year-to-year contracts with our healthcare provider. Every three years, we do take a new health drop. More often than not, now we think it's very hard to look at whether or not we will have to R and P medical costs in fiscal year 2023. So, next year, we think we'll probably R and P all of our benefits.
So, what for cities that aren't necessarily in our favorable position? What are... do you have any prediction of what kind of healthcare increases? I'm assuming we're not going to have another 12.8 or whatever that was year. Oh, pardon me?
Negative.
Negative, negative. Yes, or it went down for the public, when it went down. Can you give us some kind of considerable estimate for what we might be looking at in terms of increases for '23?
Trend this year for Blue Cross is about 7.5, so that 7.5 is an apply to your experience. Your experience ideally does not see an increase, it's in the low 80s. We're running the goal of 90s. We just locked in early, a little early, starting with Blue Cross. Some of our counterpart cities about the same size as us. Their estimates from Blue Cross are coming in at over 20%, and it sounds like that's holding pretty firm. Those cities are doing an R and P process. My anticipation is they will end up changing medical to a different group. We've done that because we had to. Year one usually goes well, because they buy your business. Year two, you're looking at probably a 20% increase next year. I think many, many, almost all healthcare units will be in that position because of the COVID awkeness. We're just barely seeing people go back for non-emergency procedures, so I do anticipate an uptick, probably a double digit next year.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much with that. Thanks for your work. We are adjourned. Chris, I'm getting another one of these.